The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to everybody who was in the Brisbane Hearing Room today, and to everybody who was following the proceedings of the Royal Commission by the live stream. This is the fourth day of Public Hearing Thirty Two, which is a hearing revisiting service providers. We commence with the acknowledgement of country. We acknowledge the Jaggora people and the Turbo people as the traditional custodians of Manjum, that is Brisbane, the land on which we are today, gathered for this hearing. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also acknowledge First Nations people who are participating in this hearing, including those who are following the hearing either in person or via the live stream. Yes, Ms Eastman?
Good morning, Commissioners, and good morning to everybody following the proceeding. The Royal Commission will now turn its attention to examining and understanding the way in which service providers address complaints.
Sorry, I think I've again forgotten to take any additional appearances today, so could I do that?
I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that.
Are there additional appearances to be announced from any parties who have not previously announced appearances? Yes?
Thank you, Chair. If the Commission pleases, my name is Claire Harris. I appear for Urala with Ms Norton.
Thank you, Ms Harris. Yes, any other appearances?
My name is Tay. I'm instructed by Course Chambers Westgarth For Endeavour Foundation.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, my name is Gardner, and I appear for the Northcott Society.
Thank you. Is there any appearance from any party represented remotely? There may be later on today. Sorry for that interruption, Ms Eastman. Thank you.
So Commissioners, we now turn attention to looking and understanding the way in which service providers respond to complaints but also incidents. The plan for today is that we will have three panels which will examine the way in which service providers respond to issues. We want to start this morning with the first panel to understand whether service providers have policies, how those policies have been developed, and the way in which the policies are used within their organisations. Our second panel will then have an opportunity of looking at particular policies a little more closely and to understand the way in which those policies might apply in given circumstances. For example, how a complaint or a grievance or feedback might be addressed pursuant to the policies. And then, at the end of the day, we'll turn our attention to the way in which service providers deal with external processes, so the extent to which the service providers need to report complaints or notifications, and the way in which external systems operate with respect to service providers. It will be also an opportunity for the Royal Commission to revisit two service providers. A representative from Urala will tell you about steps taken by Urala since Urala's appearance at Public Hearing Three in December 2019. And you'll also have the opportunity to hear from Ms Robbs from Life Without Barriers. As the Commissioners are aware, the Commissioners have provided a draft report to Life Without Barriers, but the hearing report has yet to be made public. So you'll have an opportunity to hear what steps Life Without Barriers has taken following the conclusion of the hearing. So I want to turn to this panel, and you'll see that we have three members of this panel. We have Sonia Fury, the interim chief executive. Is there any change to that, Ms Fury?
No, the board has extended my contract, and, you know, thank you.
From Community and Accommodation Restbite Agency, CARA, and I'll come back to you in a moment, Mr Swain, who is the CEO of the Endeavour Foundation, and Ms Liz Forsyth, who is the CEO of the Northcott Society. So I think they've all given their oaths and affirmations.
Yes, thank you very much. Welcome to the Royal Commission. Thank you very much for coming to the Brisbane Hearing Room to give evidence today. We appreciate the assistance you have provided and will provide during the course of the morning. So if you'd be good enough to pay attention to Ms Eastman, she will now ask you some questions.
So, Ms Fury, can I start with you? You've just confirmed that you're the interim CEO of CARA, and there's a process of recruitment underway to find a new CEO. Is that right?
No, the board has not commenced a process of recruitment. If I have the opportunity to continue, I'd be delighted to do so, and that's the current status.
And as the interim CEO, your focus is on driving the implementation of CARA's strategic plan, 2022 to 2024, is that right?
Correct.
And do you have qualifications in law and accounting and a wide-ranging experience in finance, commercial law, risk management, strategy, mergers and acquisitions?
Yes, I do.
In terms of CARA, it's an organisation that commenced its operation in 1995 in South Australia, is that right?
That's correct.
And CARA supports people with disability in South Australia, not only in Adelaide but in regional areas such as Mount Barker, Murray Bridge, Mount Gambier, Cadenia, Port Augusta, Port Peary, Port Lincoln and the surrounding areas.
Correct. Cadenia.
Oh, Cadenia, then I'm giving away my non-South Australian alert. That's quite a large area for the service to cover. And are we right in understanding that you provide services to 313 people with disability?
Yes, I was at December. Three hundred and thirteen was the number.
And the 313 people are across all the different locations?
Correct.
And the nature of the services provided include supported independent living, short-term accommodation and home and community support, is that right?
That's correct.
CARA has 252 full-time employees?
How many employees did you say there?
252 full-time employees, 676 part-time employees and 200 casual employees.
That sounds about right.
Rounding up, putting the maths, 782. Does that sound right?
Full-time equivalent, yes.
Seven was, so 782 full-time equivalent, okay.
I believe so.
All right. If we need to check that number, can you let me know? Let's make sure that my note is correct. Mr Swain, can I turn to you? So you joined the Endeavour Foundation as the CEO in December 2021, is that right?
That's correct.
And you are a founding director and immediate past chair of the Community Services Industry Alliance, is that right? And current director of Guide Dogs Queensland?
Correct.
And in terms of your background, you've worked for a number of organisations, and you have qualifications in business, health science and education?
That's correct.
And you also are a graduate of the Australian Institute of Company Directors, is that right? In terms of Endeavour, Endeavour Foundation was founded in Brisbane in around 1951, is that right?
That's correct, 71 years ago.
And the origins of the Endeavour Foundation rest with a group of parents who wanted to create more educational opportunities and options for their children with intellectual disability?
That's correct.
So over the past six decades, Endeavour has provided schools, non-vocational day services, employment services and accommodation services for people with intellectual disability?
Yes.
In terms of the number of people with disability, I think for the notice it's been described as service user. It's a little sort of impersonal, but there's 3,700 approximately service users.
That's correct.
And in terms of full-time equivalent staff, 3,106. That says at 2020. Have those numbers changed?
I couldn't tell you the exact number of full-time equivalent.
Okay. Ms Forsyth, can I turn to you? You're the CEO of Northcott, and you were appointed to that position in September 2020?
That's correct.
Now, you joined Northcott in 2008?
Yes.
And you joined as a family support worker in the Coffs Harbour branch?
That's correct.
And may I say, you're one of the people we've been talking about this week who's had a career path from support worker up to the level of CEO. Would that be a fair summary?
That would be a fair summary.
So you've held a range of roles from area manager, business development manager, and then leadership roles in customer experience, supported living and Northcott innovation, is that right?
That's right.
And in terms of Northcott, it was established in 1929 by the Rotary Club of Sydney. And it was intended again to support children with disability. And I think the old-fashioned language was the New South Wales Society for Crippled Children, is that right? So Northcott's now one of Australia's largest not-for-profit service organisations. And you provide services in metropolitan and regional locations throughout New South Wales and ACT, is that right?
That's right.
You employ over 2,000 staff?
That's correct.
And in terms of service users, if I can use that expression, are we right in understanding that there are about 16,700 service users or thereabouts?
That's correct.
And of that group, about 12,500 are children and their families?
That's correct.
So in terms of the nature of the services provided to children, what can you tell us about that?
The nature of the services provided to children primarily fall under a service we offer as a partner in the community for the National Disability Insurance Agency called Early Childhood Supports.
Right. So have each of you or someone on your behalf been following the proceedings of the Royal Commission this week?
Yes.
Yes, to a limited extent.
Right. Did you follow a panel yesterday afternoon where I asked this question, and I'm going to ask each of you? In the approach that you take, do you assume that violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation is occurring within your organisation?
Yes, I did hear you answer that question, and yes, I do assume that it is occurring.
I did not hear you ask that question, but yes, I do assume it is occurring.
I also did not hear, monitor the panel yesterday. And yes, we set our systems on the basis that that could be occurring.
So if we start with the assumption that it either is or could, and there's a little bit of a distinction between is and could, would you agree?
Yes.
So assume it is occurring in the organisations. Then when it comes to having a process in dealing with incidents of violence and abuse that occurs, you all agree that you need to have robust and effective complaint handling processes? Yes?
Yes.
The nod?
Yes.
And a way of measuring and understanding why incidents of violence and abuse occur, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, CARA, for CARA, you have developed something called an action plan, a valuation of measures to reduce violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation and discrimination against people with disability. And Commissioners, it's tab 17 in your bundle. Ms Fury, do you have a copy of that with you?
Yes, just let me go to it.
Yes. So can I ask you about the purpose of this policy? It's described as an action plan that operationalises CARA's commitment to improving our prevention of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of CARA customers and evaluating our success in doing so. So the date of the policy is 12 November 2021. What was the reason to develop this policy in November 2021?
So it is an action plan, and it was developed before I joined CARA, which was very late August 22. So I cannot give you the background to the preparation of this document.
How is this document used within CARA?
My understanding is that an action plan is to operationalise change or to communicate, but to enact change within our service operations. And this is a plan that has been introduced to do that in respect of...
What changes?
So the... Yes, I'm not sure what has triggered the need for change. I'm not sure if that has come out of an earlier interaction with this Royal Commission. But an action plan is normally prepared to document appropriate change to address a particular matter within the organisation, and this is an action plan.
You don't know if this was an action plan developed in response to a particular incident or matter?
No, I'm unable to answer that.
And you're not able to say whether it's a plan developed to take a proactive approach to dealing with violence and abuse rather than a reactive approach?
It was certainly my understanding that it is a proactive initiative.
All right. Now, so on this panel, we're going to talk about responses to complaints. And in terms of complaints, all of your organisations have received complaints in the period of the notice. So for CARA, and Commissioners, this is tab one, page three. Ms Fury, if you've got that?
So what document are you referring to?
It is your response to the Royal Commission. So you described it as Notice to Get Information in Writing Notice Commonwealth NTG 00313. You've got that document?
I have that in front of me.
So page three has a pie chart, and it gives the Royal Commission an approximate proportion of complaints by reference to who has made the complaint. Thirty-five per cent from people with disability, 48 per cent from a family member or friend of a person with disability, government bodies, 2 per cent, support workers, 5 per cent, and others, including guardians and advocates, 10 per cent. So that helps us know who is the source of complaints and the relative proportion for November 21 to November 2022. But how many complaints have there been in total?
I cannot tell you how many complaints were received and logged within CARA during the period November 21 to November 22.
Why not? We asked you for that information. Why can't you tell us?
Well, I have come with the number of complaints from the 1st of February to the 31st of the 12th, 22, in preparation, but I...
That pie chart would have had to have been developed based on some more numbers, I assume?
Yes, I understand that is the case.
But you don't know?
I don't have the full details with me, but I can, I certainly will provide that to you.
And if there's anyone in the room assisting you who can provide it during the course of your evidence, that would be appreciated. Mr Swain, can I turn to Endeavour? In terms of complaints, and if you've got your response, Commissioners, this is tab 26 at page five. So Endeavour has told the Royal Commission that of the complaints received in the 12-month period prior to the notice, 7% were received from disability service users, 14% from family members and support networks, 31% from advocates and others acting on behalf of people in endeavour support, 33% from workers and 15% fell outside the specified categories. In terms of those proportions, what's the total number of complaints?
Our total number of complaints is around 200. And can I just qualify that some of those categorisations might blur that some of the employees, for example, may be people who are in receipt of a NDIS package? So they may be supported employees as well.
Okay, so they might be people working in the ADE?
That's correct.
Businesses, all right.
And likewise, some family members may also be categorised as advocates.
So it's a sort of rough allocation. How do you work out that you allocate the complaint to a referable category? Is that under a policy or is this something you've just done for the Royal Commission?
That's something that's done within our system, and it's something that we need to improve, the categorisation.
Now, Ms Forsyth, can I turn to you? So Commissioners, the relevant information appears behind tab 32, page seven. In terms of the information that you've provided to the Royal Commission, again, you've provided us both the proportion of complaints and the approximate number of complaints. So why do you say approximate number? Is there any uncertainty as to the actual number of complaints?
I'm unsure why the word approximate was used. It's probably just an error. My understanding is that there have been 203 complaints in the period of which we produced the notice for.
So 33% of disability service users, 47% of family and support networks, 6% of independent complaints and 14% from NDIS provider employees. What do you mean by NDIS provider employees for this purpose?
For this purpose, and we do give a bit of a breakdown in an appendix, that includes employees of a service provider that provides NDIS services.
So the appendix, Commissioners, is an extra C at page 22. So that sets out the number of complaints by reference. So when we look at the source of complaints, just looking at an extra C, the highest level of sources of complaints are described as customer circle of support. What does that mean?
Customer circle of support are the people involved in the customer's life who support them around decision-making in particular, or who support them to live their lives. And we give a breakdown of what circle of support means, which includes formal guardianships, parents, siblings, relatives, partners and children.
And then looking at that circle of support in terms of the, by far the most significant source of complaints are parents? Now, does that reflect the nature of the services that you provide? That parents play perhaps a more active role than maybe some of the other services? Have you looked at that as a reason?
I think it reflects the nature of the supports that we provide in so much that lots of parents are formally engaged as decision-makers on behalf of people we support.
Now, Mr Swain, I don't mean to be unfair to you in any way, but if we just take the numbers across just the group, for Endeavour, there's a significantly lower percentage of complaints coming from family members and other support workers compared to what we hear from Northcott or CARA. Has your organisation done any analysis into who is making complaints? And if, for example, in Northcott, significant number of complaints from parents, that in Endeavour, is there a particular sort of area where the complaints are more likely to come? Either because of the person's role or the nature of the activity? Have you done that analysis?
Yes, and I think it's around the classification of whether it's family lodging, and this is in our system, whether it's the family lodging the complaint or if they're classified as an advocate. We would be of the view that over 50% of our complaints are lodged by family.
Okay, so the numbers, when, and I think you said earlier that some of those descriptions might overlap with advocates and families, so would that account for it?
Yes.
All right. So we understand from the information that you've provided that each of your organisations have developed some new policies that have been developed and commenced operation in the period of the last two years. So that's why we've chosen you for this panel, because you've all undertaken an exercise of refreshing existing complaints. Can I ask, in the process of developing your new key policies, have any of your organisations undertaken a process of auditing and mapping the data available to you to work out what you need by way of a new complaints process by reference to looking at what has happened in the past? Ms Fury?
I am unable to, I do not know whether an audit has been undertaken in relation to the preparation of these policies or any mapping? I can't answer that either, I'm sorry.
For Northcott?
I probably wouldn't use the term audit. And the work that we've done has been refinement of existing policies and procedures rather than the creation of new ones. And we do have information that has fed into that process. Partly, that information has come from looking at trends around incidents and complaints through our internal quality and risk committee, which is a cross-section across the organisation that looks at trends around the data and the information coming from our systems and makes recommendations for changes in response. In addition to that, we have a post-incident review process whereby, for critical incidents, we undertake a process to identify broader systemic changes that could be implemented to either prevent or mitigate further risk in a similar situation, which has resulted in changes to our policies.
So can you explain how that work has informed the modification or any changes to the existing policies and the one that you now work with?
Probably an example of that within the policies has been to provide greater clarity to our staff around the nature of supports to provide a person who is the subject of an incident or a complaint. And so while our policy had referenced the requirement for staff to provide that support, we provided additional and extra information to be quite clear around the breadth and nature of that support, not just being immediately post, but broader than that, and to encompass a broader way of thinking about supporting someone across their physical, mental and emotional health, and thinking about the providing sufficient resources for staff to identify other sources, external agencies, advocates, support services that they can refer to.
So that all has affected the way in which you've developed a complaint handling procedure, hasn't it?
In terms of the nature of our policies in response, yes. So we've been working on ensuring that our policies and procedures and provide sufficient support for staff to undertake supporting our customers, as we call them through those processes.
Thank you. Mr Swain, has Endeavour undertaken any auditing or mapping of what's occurred before in developing the complaint handling approaches?
Well, I would say that the complaint handling, we call it a feedback policy, was actually initiated in 2007. And it's been a process of continuous improvement since then, including improvement with feedback from people that have gone through the complaints process as well as other general improvement, focus on general improvement.
In the process of either developing or revising these new complaint handling procedures, what have your organisations learned about the nature of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation in your organisations? Mr Swain?
So I think what we've learnt in going through the complaints processes around the nature of violence is at its core. And I think we've seen this in the recent own motion inquiry, is a matter of culture. I think we've heard this week also the nature of...
I just want to focus on your organisation about before, not what you've heard this week, but in the process of doing the work that you've done, what? Did your organisation learn about the nature and or extent of violence and abuse?
Certainly. What we've learnt from that is that often it occurs and we don't hear about it. So it's the lack of those forums and opportunities to connect with our clients and their families. And it's those connection points that are vitally important, providing that information on how to complain or how to provide feedback. So the need for much more active support for people to be aware of how to complain or provide feedback, and the need for provision of that advocacy, that's what we've identified, I think.
Sorry, forgive me for interrupting, but that is the response to... My question is directed to the nature or the cause, not how to respond to it, but what have you learned about the nature or the cause of violence and abuse?
I think what we've learnt is that the nature of violence is, or abuse, is often around the disempowerment of individuals.
That might be a cause, but what's the nature?
Can you just elaborate on?
The nature? What's the nature of the violence?
What, sorry, what sort of?
Is it hitting? Is it kicking?
Sure, sorry.
Something done by support workers? Is it between people with disability? I mean, what's the nature of the violence that you've learned from the review to do the new complaint handling?
Certainly. The nature of violence that we've identified is, in our organisation, there is... Certainly, the, the, the nature of violence that we've identified is, um, in our organisation there is a number of falls that occur and, and that may be related to, um, neglect. Uh, also there is, uh, client-on-client, uh, abuse that, um, may be related to, uh, the environment and the management of triggers. We're certainly, uh, looking at that and the need for, for much more, uh, focus on more therapeutic environments. Um, and also, one strong theme for us in the nature of abuse is the disempowerment of individuals, so, uh, around the neglect, not hearing uh, the voice of individuals and allowing them to exercise choice and control. And that's not just in relation to our own staff, but that may also be in relation to families as well.
Okay, so, so that process sounds to me, can I summarise it this way? That, uh, you've got an overall sense of a problem without addressing that problem by specifying nature, extent and cause separately. You've sort of rolled that together, is that the approach you've taken?
We, we, we do analyse that regularly. We, uh, identify the nature of, of incidents. Uh, we roll those up, we report those to our board committee, we identify, um, the nature of incidents, the contributing factors for those and also the actions that we're taking to respond to those.
In Cara, have you done an exercise of identifying nature, extent or cause?
So, in our organisation, we have a safeguarding team that triages all of our reported incidents.
I'm gonna interrupt there.
Get to that, sorry.
Sorry to jump in and I forgive me if I've been in, not clear in my question. I'm not asking you about the response.
Hmm.
I'm asking you about what the nature of the violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation is in the organisation, the extent, and if you wish, the cause, and whether an examination of nature, extent and cause informs the approach that you take in developing the new policy. So, I'm not, we're not up to how do you deal with it now. Is that clear?
Yes, so my time with the organisation has been limited. But for example, in the month of October, we had twenty-eight incidents. The majority of those related to medication errors, to sunburn, neglect in the sun and not following care plans properly. So they are the, the nature of incidents that I have seen during my period. Um, in terms of our, um, identification of the cause, um, we do go through a thorough investigative process, which includes meeting with our staff, with our customers, you know, their families, depending on the severity of the, the, the matter, um, to, to clarify, mainly to further training, um, but we do to under, depending on the severity, um, the most severe, we will do a root cause analysis to really understand how this has arisen.
So one thing is to do, uh, an analysis of a particular incident that's occurred and you might do a root cause analysis. Do you step back from the review of one incident and look at globally a pattern of complaints or, uh, sorry, a pattern of incidents to understand the nature, extent and cause, not just an immediate response to one incident. I'm trying to get to understanding whether that mapping or auditing has been done to understand the trends, patterns and to really identify if there's hotspots, for example, in the organisation. That's what I'm getting at. Have you done that work?
Um, the form in which it is done is to meet monthly as a management team and to review all incidents that have arisen during that period. Um, to identify the trends, um, and where they, um, are the particular severity is to identify the cause. But there is much discussion, there is much consultation, um, to really understand the nature of the incidents that are occurring in our organisation and to take responsive action.
Right, so I want to move to a different, um, topic now, and that is that when the policies were prepared, were they prepared internally by the staff of your respective organisations?
Uh, I, I can't tell you when the, or how the policy that was prepared in two thousand and seven was developed. But certainly, um, with other policies and our policies have a two-yearly review cycle. The review cycle is the responsibility of the, the relevant operational manager in that particular area.
For Northcott?
To my understanding, yes.
Internally?
Yes.
And Cara?
Yes, internally.
Right. Have, uh, any of the policies, uh, had legal advice or assistance from lawyers, either in drafting or reviewing the policies? Do you know?
Um, generally, yes, where appropriate, we have sought external advice, legal advice on our policy. Um, I cannot say, um, with respect to these ones we're looking at today.
For Endeavour?
Yes, same that, uh, where indicated, uh, we seek legal advice. We're seeking legal advice on a, a policy at the moment, but for these particular policies, I, I couldn't give you an answer on that.
And for Northcott?
And that would be the same situation for us.
In terms of, um, any legal advisers that you use, uh, are the lawyers who you use to give advice people, uh, who or firms that have specific expertise in understanding the human rights of people with disability? Do you know that?
I don't know the answer to that question.
We have a, a panel approach to provision of legal advice and would be selecting the appropriate lawyers to provide advice in that particular matter.
But my question is whether you know whether the lawyers who give you advice have particular expertise and or experience in the human rights of people with disability?
I don't know, I'd have to check.
Cara? I'm also unable to answer that one.
Uh, in terms of any legal advice, do the legal advisers that you use have any experience or expertise in trauma-informed approaches for survivor victims of violence? Do you know that?
I don't know the answer to that.
I do not know the answer.
Uh, do any of the legal advisers that you use have experience or, uh, particular expertise in culturally responsive approaches to dealing with violence and abuse? Do you know that?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know. Do the lawyers that you use have experience in insurance and liability and claims? Do you know that?
Yes.
They do?
Yes.
By the nature of the policies we would seek advice on, yes.
And Cara?
And I would say yes.
Um, would we be right in understanding that if the expertise in terms of legal advice that you receive are focused on claims and insurance, that what sits behind these policies are policies to minimise the liability of your respective organisations?
No, I, I don't agree with that and, uh, our, certainly our focus is currently on model litigant approaches, um, which is not about limiting, uh, our liability or exposure.
I, I don't agree with that and the policies that you have referred to for us in this session, to my knowledge, haven't had any legal advice. We, we broadly would in some policies, but for the complaints incidence, policies haven't had any legal advice.
And Cara?
And, um, I, um, so no is the, is my answer. Um, we have developed our policies in relation to complaints and incidents internally. Um, we have, um, aligned them closely to the NDIS national standards. We have, um, engaged other experts or have been in the team to assist us internally develop those policies.
So, given that, I think you've all had some legal advice, be it internal or external, uh, in the preparation of or review of these policies, have you also received external advice from, uh, specialist, uh, disability advocacy groups?
Uh, can you please repeat the question?
So, you've got, you've had the legal advice, have you also sought external advice from disability representative groups or disability specialist advocacy groups?
In relation to policies and procedures?
On complaints. I just, I'm not dealing with all your policies, but just on complaints.
Uh, I'm not aware that we've done that.
Northcott?
Uh, I'm not aware that we've done that, but the policies that we develop, we do, um, use resources from those types of organisations to assist.
I'm unable to answer that one. Uh, in terms of either the review or the development of policies, how many of the disability users within your organisation were consulted either on any drafts of the policy or invited to participate in the drafting of policies? Do you know?
Certainly with our organisation, uh, we can certainly do better as far as.
I'm just asking how many of the.
We can't give you a number, but, uh, I can tell you that the, the framework of, um, just generally uh, framework around, um, complaints, we do consult with, uh, family of, uh, those people with disabilities and, uh, that's through our national council and that's with our broader frameworks. So we do seek feedback from, from those groups. I can't tell you the number.
I'm very narrow today. I'm only on these complaint policies. So, I want to know for each of the organisations in either preparing or reviewing the policies, to what extent did any of your service users participate in either the drafting or reviewing before they were finalised? Can you tell me whether you know that?
I'm not aware of any of our current customers having been involved in that process directly.
Northcott?
Yeah, in terms of the drafting, that was, uh, a while ago, I can't talk to that, but definitely in terms of the review, I'm not aware of the, of any that were involved, but that, that we do make amendments on the basis of, uh, feedback and incidents that may have occurred that require improvement.
Would you agree with this? It seems to be very odd, does it not? That the people who are the beneficiaries of these policies have not been consulted or involved in the preparation of or review of these policies. And that you as the CEOs are able to say, I don't know, but probably not.
I, I agree with the assertion and, um, that's something that we've identified that we do need to improve.
So how would you improve it?
How do we improve it? Uh, we do need to identify direct engagement with people with disabilities and their families in those, uh, client-facing documents and particularly the ones that, that are under discussion today.
Northcott?
Yeah, look, I, I'm aware that we had a previous mechanism, if you like, to, um, e- enable participation that was in the form of a policy review committee, um, that, to my understanding, um, didn't necessarily, um, enable people who were part of that to, to contribute in a valuable way. So I think we need to really understand, um, how that contribution to the development of policy can be really valuable and not done in a, in a, uh, tokenistic way for the sake of it.
For Cara?
Um, so we have, this is before my time. Um, my understanding is we had a customer reference group, um, specifically, um, um, involved in our organisation for these sorts of, um, things. And that it was difficult to, um, extract valuable input into those governance processes from this customer reference group. It was, um, viewed as a, a social opportunity and the, the desire and willingness and ability to contribute meaningfully was limited.
All right, so looking at the, uh, policies, there's various descriptions. Sometimes you see the expression complaint, sometimes you see formal complaint, sometimes you see informal complaint, sometimes you see concern, sometimes you see feedback, sometimes you see incidents, sometimes you see notifications. So there's different expressions used. In, and I'm trying to sort of deal with this globally, so bear with me. It, in the approach taken to dealing with complaints, it seems that all of these policies start with the first step of characterising the complaint, generally by its seriousness, as to whether it's at a lower level feedback, an intermediary level concern or grievance, and then something that may take on the characterisation of informal but formal, and then maybe a very serious formal complaint. So all your policies seem to have this sort of approach to gradation of the complaints. Who made the decision about characterising the complaints in that way?
I'm unable to say who made that decision.
I can't tell you who made that decision.
But similarly, when the complaints policy was first drafted, I'm unaware.
From a person-centred approach, would you not agree that if something is of a concern to a person, that their concerns should not be determined by a category of somebody else who will be responding to the complaint, deciding whether their issue is feedback, a concern, formal, informal, serious or not serious? You accept that?
Um, I, I think from our perspective, it's important for us to understand, um, what sort of skill sets we need to help in the resolution of a complaint. And from our perspective, all complaints are critically important and valuable. But we need a way of interpreting or identifying who ni- who is best skilled to manage and support the resolution of that complaint.
Could part of that be done by asking the person who has the grievance as to what they wish to happen in relation to their complaint or concern, rather than that be determined by a piece of paper?
And that's part of our standard protocol is to engage with the, the person making the complaint to ask what a, what a good outcome is from their perspective.
Because these policies seem to categorise the seriousness of the complaint by reference to an organisational perspective of how you're going to deal with it, rather than a more qualitative perspective of the seriousness for the person concerned. Would you agree with that?
Um, at Cara, we have a team that evaluate each complaint. Um, so it is not a single individual following an objective set of criteria. There are social workers in that team, police investigator, um, previously. Um, and, um, so individuals who have worked in services, um, and who are now part of that team. So we do try to give it a depth and a breadth of, um, um, consideration in making that evaluation.
In all of the policies, they appear to be triggered by the fact that somebody has to come forward to do something. So it's what I might call a reactive or responsive approach to complaints. It requires the person with disability, family member, um, or the category of people who you've described earlier. So do you accept that it's a very responsive approach to dealing with complaints in the sense that it requires somebody to get to a point where they feel they need to raise something with the organisation that then might be characterised by the organisation as feedback, concern, informal, formal, serious complaint? Do you agree with that?
Um, not, not fully, because I think that that's one mechanism of many mechanisms that we do need to have a framework that allows people to initiate complaints. But our whole, whole approach to safeguarding is to proactively engage in service reviews, management training. The rhythm of conducting, um, house or site meetings so that we hear the voice of people proactively and hear their concerns and seek to resolve those. So that's just, that's another rhythm that's occurring in parallel with a complaints mechanism.
The, the purpose of the complaints policy is to outline how we will undertake a fair process around response. It does not include information in relation to all the ways that we, uh, engage directly with customers, hear from them and change in response, nor does it talk to preventative work that certainly we do around understanding where there might be issues before they arise.
And looking at the policies, uh, for the most part, there are policies that assume a particular incident or incidents occur. Uh, would you agree with me, reading your policies, it's difficult to see how a person who might get to what I might call the last straw on a pattern of behaviour that they have tolerated for a long period of time, what Sam Peterson calls the slow violence, or others might call systemic neglect. How that last straw reflects the whole of that person's experience? These complaint frameworks that focus on incidents are not capturing those types of complaints. Would you agree with that?
I agree. It's often said, um, when I, as a CEO, the first time that I hear about a matter is when someone's picking up the phone to talk to me and that's those last straw things that you're referring to. Which is why we need to work more proactively to hear voices much earlier on and to, you know, resolve issues at their source as early as possible.
Uh, again, the policy itself is, the, the purpose of which is to have a clear process for response. Um, so that it doesn't talk to all the other ways that we, uh, work to prevent and, and we have done some work that we're happy to share with the commission in relation to understanding what might be issues and trends, particularly in supported living environments, that actually, um, indicate us to act early, uh, rather than wait. to act early, uh, rather than waiting for a responsive, uh, I guess, response from the organisation in relation to a complaint or incident.
And would we be right in understanding the complaints process, uh, essentially premise that the incident will be something done by a person who's the direct care, care support or support worker?
Can you repeat the question? Sorry.
Sorry, I didn't put that. When, when you look at the policies as a whole and to understand what you can make a complaint about and who you can make a complaint about, to the extent that it's focused on an incident, it seems to have a focus on identifying the particular person, maybe a support worker or a, a team leader who engaged in that conduct, so that it's referable to incident and a particular person.
Um, the intention of our complaints policy is not just incident-specific, uh, and it is, uh, intended to, um, be clear with everyone that, uh, any expression of dissatisfaction about anything that occurs in the organisation can, should be considered, uh, you know, appropriate response like it is a complaint. So, uh, we don't think of complaints as responses to incidents. We think of them as expressions of dissatisfaction in a whole lot of different ways across the organisation.
Is that the same for the other organisations?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do the, uh, policies that you've provided to us, and we asked you to provide your policies in relation to quality and safety of services, are these policies that would apply if a complaint was made against another service user? So an interpersonal complaint between service users. Does the policy apply to that cohort?
We, um, and it, it may be a question of which policy it references, but which kind of doesn't really matter to us because we've got a variety that we can use to help guide how we respond. But we do, uh, specifically deal with our, uh, abuse and neglect policy in relation to, uh, incidents or complaints that relate to two individual people who are receiving services in a setting that, that, and it outlines responsibility for responding appropriately to both parties.
For Endeavour?
And certainly that's the case with our organisation as well.
And for Cara?
Um, so there are opportunities for other organisations to feed back into our organisation and to capture those.
All right. So I want to, uh, turn to who's responsible for these policies in the organisation. So at Northcott, you've got a dedicated team or a department for investigating complaints or incidents. Is that right?
That's correct.
And at Endeavour, do you have a dedicated department to deal with complaints or incidents?
Yes, we do.
And Cara? And in terms of the composition of the people in that department, uh, what's their skill set? Do you want to start with Endeavour?
So we have a broad skill set, so it's not only just in that department who's responsible for investigations, but it may also include those in HR investigations or in complex support. So it's actually a broad team of dedicated people in that safeguarding space.
Are there any people with disability employed to work in that, that department?
I'm not aware of anyone with disability in that department.
Has there been any consideration to ensuring that there is an employee with disability? Perhaps somebody who has lived in or, uh, worked in the ADEs or attended your services?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. Yep. But our skill, skill sets are quite broad from, uh, investigations, operations, social work, those people that have worked in, uh, supporting other vulnerable groups like child protection and child protection investigations. So we have quite a large group of dedicated people in that space.
Northcott?
Yeah, to, to clarify the, the function of the team at Northcott, um, the team is there to support, uh, the operational parts of the business to undertake appropriate and safe responses, particularly in relation to complaints and incidents. So they don't necessarily do all the work themselves, but they're there to support, um, the operational teams to, to do that, who are, who are closest to the people, um, they support in the situation. In terms of the, the broad skill set of that team, that certainly for us includes people who have, uh, experience, uh, and qualifications in investigations, who have backgrounds in working with vulnerable people, sometimes in the context of policing, who have trauma-informed, uh, training across all our safeguarding team. Um, and, uh, we do have people with, um, who have identified with, uh, as having a disability as part of that team.
Is it standard for all, uh, matters that might be characterised as formal complaints or serious complaints to be investigated?
Yes.
Um, and, uh, what complaints will not be the subject of investigation?
So for, for Northcott, every, um, complaint is the subject of, um, some form of in- investigation and consideration in accordance with the policy. Um, so it does, the policy is set in a way to help guide how the organisation provides a proportionate response. Um, but each complaint, um, that we receive, um, we don't just put in a category and accept that. We work with that person in terms of what the response they actually want, uh, and we will, uh, adjust and adapt our response accordingly.
So, um, I think Northcott, you've got an Investigations Practice Guide which you've provided to us, Commissioners, at tab thirty-six. Uh, for Mr Swain, in Endeavour's response to the notice, you've identified the need to strengthen the team's capability in conducting investigations and using trauma-informed practice. Is that right?
Yes, and particularly for those, um, uh, that are undertaking investigations into uh, lower classification, um, uh, complaints.
Well, it's not uncommon in complaint handling systems to undertake investigations. That seems to be common practice now. Stepping back from that common practice, why does your organisation undertake investigations? Why is that necessary?
For us, it's about understanding what's happened and looking at how we can not only fix that situation, but prevent it from happening again.
So it's got a twofold purpose. One, to understand what happened, and two, to assist the organisation respond.
Yes.
On the understanding, on the understanding of what happened, if the complainant tells you their version of a story, do you not start with believing their version of a story?
Yes, we absolutely start with believing.
So in terms of, uh, from there on, is the process of investigation essentially more for the second purpose, which is to help the organisation understand where its liability might be or what it needs to do in response? Is that right?
Yeah, perhaps I articulated it in a way that was a bit misleading. By understanding what went on, it's not to establish the veracity of a person's experience. Uh, it is to determine what the organisation or the staff, you know, did or didn't do that has led to that situation and fixing it immediately, but also then learning from that.
Right. And I, I ask you that because for people who've experienced violence and abuse, maybe survivor victims of trauma, an investigation can actually compound the process. So I'm asking, what is the purpose of the investigation? And if it is for assisting the organisation, then do you not need to make that absolutely clear to any complainant? That the investigation is for the purpose of the organisation, not for them?
Can I please clarify that our investigation's really more about incidents? That's where I expect investigations. For complaints, um, it's about resolution. So if there are, if there is need for any investigation, it's about the best way to resolve that complaint or issue or matter. So I thoroughly agree that we, we should be doing this in a trauma-informed way. Yep.
And, uh, from the description that you've got of the qualifications in your investigations team, if you've got former police officers and people with experience investigation. For a person with disability being brought into an investigation by a former police officer, how do you manage that very significant power imbalance and also perhaps the perception that a former policeman investigating you means you'll be in trouble? And I raise that because the Royal Commission has heard a lot in public hearings and in its submission about people with disability having great fear of the police. So how do you manage that?
Uh, look, we don't, to, to be clear, it's not that we have necessarily recruited people with that background. It just happens to be that's the makeup of the background of people in that team, um, in terms of the skill set. Um, all of those people are trained in trauma-informed approaches. Um, and we do very care if it's, uh, an incident that is, well, any incident potentially is likely to cause, um, re-traumatisation in terms of bringing up the issue. So we do have an extensive planning meeting beforehand to understand the nature of how that person communicates, who their circle of supports are, where they might need additional support, to make sure that we don't enter into that environment in that way. And that process is not necessarily conducted uh, in terms of the investigation by someone who may have the qualification of being a police officer and interviewing. We garner information in a variety of ways. Uh, lots of the people we support might not necessarily communicate verbally, so we use alternative communication. They, um, may not wish to participate in the process, which is completely, um, something that we established upfront. So we take a range of steps to ensure that we've considered the issue and we, uh, by no means go in, um, like a police officer, no offence to police officers, but that's not the nature of the work that we're doing.
It's a perception issue. Uh, I could probably ask you questions about this all day, but my final question is to each of you, at the end of a person taking their complaint through the complaints process and thinking about the people who you've identified in the number of complaints and proportion of complaints, how do the complaint processes lead to particular outcomes for people with disability? What outcomes follow from a complaint process, Mr Swain?
So our, uh, complaints process requires the complaints handling officer to focus on what are the outcomes sought in the first place. And at the end of that, this is well documented within our, um, complaints management system as to whether there's a satisfaction with the outcome of that, that process.
Can that be reviewed if somebody is not happy with it?
Absolutely.
I'm going to ask you some details of your policy in a moment, but yeah.
Absolutely. It can be reviewed and we provide for review mechanisms in what we call a closure communication.
Okay. And for Northcott?
Uh, yeah, the, the outcome can be varied because again, it depends on what is sought through the process. Um, and often it will be, um, changes to the nature of the services they're receiving um, as a, as an, as a common outcome. Uh, we absolutely have a, um, opportunity for people who are not satisfied with that to, um, to escalate it, to have it reviewed, not just internally, but we encourage people to go to the NDIS Commission if they're unsatisfied, uh, with our response.
And in terms of outcomes, when you say it's what the person wants, but, uh, surely the organisation should say somewhere very clearly in its policy and process what outcomes are available. So what you would be prepared to do. Do you do that? Or do you just put the onus on the person making the complaint to work out it?
We currently don't document it in the policy. It's certainly part of the practice to have that conversation and to talk through, um, the options that might be considered in resolving that, but it's not currently documented in our policy.
Why not document it in the policy?
Look, I think it's something that we should do, uh, be clearer about in terms of the options available because I think it's probably an area that we haven't, um, been clear enough with the people we support in terms of those options.
That's, that's like having a process that says to somebody, jump into my pool, it's fantastic, but I'm not going to tell you how deep it is or where you might end up. Right? Surely if you've got to have a complaint handling process, you need to make it absolutely transparent and clear as to what the outcomes are going to be from that process for the person who is prepared to take the risk to come forward to make a complaint. So you'll put them through a process, but you're not going to tell them in advance what the outcome might be? Do you think that's, that is a, a weakness in the approach?
The policy is drafted in such a way to, um, ensure that we treat each situation individually and it's really difficult to be that specific in response to a person's complaint because they are all responded to differently and each resolution of that looks different. Um, so when I say we, we should be enhancing that policy further for its useful people is to be giving examples of the natures of things that can happen. But there's no way that our policy could include every single possible outcome for a person.
But may, may I put this to you? It could, if you have done the nature, extent and cause and mapping work before having a policy focused on process. If you've done that work, then you should know your organisation well enough to know what are the issues that are likely to be raised. And the mapping work will have also told you what types of outcomes have worked successfully. So can I put to you that the absence of having clarity in a policy as to what the outcomes are likely to be is a weakness in that policy and it could even be a deterrent to anybody using the policy? As I said, why jump in the pool where you do not know how deep it is and where you might end?
I agree. It's a weakness in the policy.
For Cara?
Um, so the comments that have already been expressed are similar for Cara. So yes, we do record our outcomes in detail. Um, there's a permanent record there. Um, we have the action plans in place to, to implement, you know, improved practices. Um, I was just reflecting on your discussion there. One of the, um, complaints we often have is, um, staff familiarity. You know, that's a different person coming to our service. Um, and that is a, a difficult one. Um, because, you know, there are resourcing constraints too. So, um, I do think, I, I appreciate your comments and I do appreciate that sometimes it's a case by case.
The Commissioners who make the decisions, not me, I'm just asking the questions. Um, Commissioner, I'm just conscious of the time and so I'll conclude my questions for this panel now. The Commissioners may have some questions for you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll commence by asking Commissioner if she has any questions.
Uh, no, thank you.
And Commissioner McShirley?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Ms Eastman asks you about the involvement, involvement of disabled people in the development of your policy and investigative processes. I'd like to ask, from a senior management point of view, how many of your direct reports have a disability?
I, I cannot give you the exact number, but some, there are a number.
Could you be a bit more clear? Some, as in you, you believe some of your direct report are disabled?
Yeah, sorry, my direct reports? No, I do not believe any of my direct reports, of which.
Uh, okay.
Are disabled.
Thank you. Northcott?
Uh, none of my direct reports have disclosed that they have a disability, but one has disclosed that they are a parent of a child with a disability.
But to be clear, have a disability that you're not aware of?
Yeah, that, that's to be clear, yes.
And none of my direct reports have disclosed that they have a disability, Commissioner?
I see. Thank you.
Ms Fury, um, how many reports, uh, of this Royal Commission, uh, have you read?
How many reports have I read? Um, so I have not read any reports in full.
Don't you think it would have been a good idea
Yes.
to have, uh, read reports, uh, or follow the proceedings of this Royal Commission dealing with service providers in order to inform you of the sorts of issues that, uh, should be considered by your organisation?
Yes, I absolutely agree.
Why didn't you?
Sorry?
Why didn't you?
Um, so I have, I'm not from the disability sector. I have been with the organisation now for five months. Um, I have certainly read material around, um, our documents, our policies, our procedures. I've sought to understand in a, you know, fairly short timeframe, how our organisation, um, delivers well for our customers. But, um, I have not reviewed documents in full.
Can I put the same question first to Mr Swain?
Uh, Chair, I've, I've not read in full any, uh, reports of the Royal Commission. I have read materials summarising and relaying, um, considerations of the Royal Commission or the, um, the, the, um, the work of the Royal Commission from peak organisations and from our own, uh, uh, internal staff.
And Ms Forsyth?
I can't tell you the, the number, but I certainly have read, uh, reports from the Royal Commission, um, including, uh, reports in relation to earlier hearings, particularly specifically related to service providers.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your evidence, uh, in the panel. Grateful to you for your assistance today. So thank you very much. Ms Eastman, do we take a break or do we proceed?
Well, I'm in your hands, Commissioner, so we, we could have a short break now if that was convenient to you.
Yes, we can have a short break. Let us take, uh, a, perhaps a five-minute break and then we'll perhaps add the morning to adjournment a little later then.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Royal Commission is now adjourned.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Eastman.
Thank you. Our next witness is Terry Simons, the CEO of Urala. So welcome, Mr Simons. I think you've got to give your oath or affirmation.
That's right, I haven't been at the venue.
You have or haven't?
Have not.
Have not, all right. Well, thank you, Mr Simons, for coming to the Royal Commission today to give evidence. This is a revisiting of Urala, as I'm sure you know, Urala was the subject of some evidence at Public Hearing Three, of which there is a report available. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate in front of you, she will administer the affirmation to you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr Simons, thank you very much. I shall now ask Miss Eastman to ask you some questions.
Thank you, Mr Simons. Can I confirm that you are Terry Simons?
Yes.
And you are now the CEO of Urala and you commenced in that role on the 1st of March 2021?
I did.
And in terms of your professional background, you commenced your professional career in the not-for-profit sector here in Brisbane?
I did.
And before joining Urala, you were the Deputy Secretary of Health and Wellbeing, of the Health and Wellbeing Division of the Department of Health and Human Services in Victoria?
I was.
You've previously been the Deputy Secretary for Strategy, closely working with the community sector on reform of out-of-home care.
Yes.
And you've also held senior roles with Royal Melbourne Hospital and in Queensland Health?
Yes.
And you are a State Committee Member for NDS, who we heard from yesterday in Victoria, is that right?
Yes.
Now, in terms of Urala, as at its latest annual report, Urala supports 2,414 clients.
Yes.
And you have over 2,000 employees, including about 1,900 employees and 140 supported employees, is that right?
Yes.
And you're aware that the purpose of your appearance this morning is to address the matters that we asked you to address in two notices. So commissioners, we issued notices to Urala to give information to the Royal Commission and you'll have two responses from Urala dated the 6th of January this year and an earlier response of the 31st of August 2022. Have you got copies of those with you?
I do.
Right. You're aware that those notices concerned responding to actions Urala has taken following Urala's appearance at a very early public hearing of the Royal Commission, Public Hearing Three held in Melbourne in December 2019?
Yes.
And obviously you did not give evidence at that hearing and the former CEO, Dr Devonessen, gave evidence, is that right?
Yes.
Chair and commissioners, I'm very conscious that for people who recall Public Hearing Three and particularly the circumstances in relation to people who receive services from Urala, that these are very traumatic and distressing events. While they might now be nine years, we understand that the impact of that trauma may continue for individuals. So the content warning that was put up on the Royal Commission's website in the opening had relevant telephone numbers and I'd encourage anyone who's concerned about those experiences to make calls and use those services. For the purpose of my questions to Mr Simons today, I will not go into any of the circumstances or details in relation to the violence and abuse that we considered at Public Hearing Three. And the focus of my questions will be directed to the actions taken by Urala following the public hearing. So, Mr Simons, I've got a few questions then arising. I assume that you have read Public Hearing Three and the Commissioner's Report, is that right?
I have.
Have you also had an opportunity either to watch all or part of the evidence or to read the transcript of that public hearing?
I have.
So when Ms Devonessen gave evidence at the Royal Commission, I think she told the Royal Commission that she said Urala has realised that there were failures and significant shortcomings. And the evidence that she gave at that time sought to explain how Urala had embarked upon a path of reform and change. And the Commissioners noted that in the hearing report at paragraph 234. But Ms Devonessen also acknowledged that there was still more work to be done in particular areas. So I want to ask you about that. The first issue was the extent to which people with disability were represented in the decision-making roles and in senior positions in Urala. We heard evidence of a committee called Urala's Committee Partnership and Advisory Committee, but we understood from its terms of reference that the members were required to sign non-disclosure agreements, although as a matter of practice that did not occur. We asked about the role of this advisory committee and whether or not it was the only place that people with disability were seen in having the opportunity to be heard in decision-making or policy within the organisation. At the time, none of the board directors were people with disability, but four board directors had children with lived experience of disability. And the board members had had some training in relation to the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. So can you tell us, and you set this out in the response of the January response at page one, what Urala now does in relation to people with disability being part of the board, senior management or the way in which the voices of people with disability are heard in Urala?
Yes, Council. There are now two directors of nine who live with a disability. The board has also initiated an observership programme to contribute to a pipeline of future candidates for people with a disability to join our board and other boards across industry. We have our first observer joining our next board meeting. I will just comment on that point. The Chair has shared with me her ambition to get to 50% of our board eventually having a disability and she considers that's appropriate for an organisation and I agree with her about that. It may take some time to get there. I have currently one direct report with a disability. The board has approved a programme for an internship for the CEO role, which will help develop succession planning for the most senior executive position inside the organisation. And I'm pleased to say we have our first CEO intern with a disability who will commence working with me shortly. The organisation, the YPAC committee that you mentioned before, now has its, at the time of the hearing, these things were not in place, but the committee is now chaired by a person with a disability who is on our board. The executive sponsor for that committee is a person with a disability. There is several members with a disability on that committee, including now one member who is a tenant in a group home. That committee has now endorsed the establishment of a lived experience advisory panel who have explicitly been asked by YCPAC to be involved in policy and service development across the organisation. We currently have 16 people who have elected or nominated to join that committee. Nine of those live in group homes. We have a range of committees across the organisation in which people with disability are participants and clients are participants. Currently, 20% of the committees that we have at a management level have a representative who's a person with a disability. Our senior management team has agreed that where those committees relate to service delivery for our clients, the appropriate target is 100%. We have also introduced external voices of people with disability. So YCPAC has changed its terms of reference to now include people with disability who are not clients of Urala so that we are challenged by external perspectives. And we have a commitment to employ more people with disability inside the organisation.
I want to ask you about something called the Chief Experience Officer. So in October 2021, Urala established the first Chief Experience Officer role. And you've said in the response it's reserved for a leader with lived experience of disability. What's the nature of that role and where does the Chief Experience Officer fit in in terms of senior management structure?
The Chief Experience Officer reports to me. The role was created in October, I think, of 2021 or around that time. We advertised for somebody with a disability and I'm pleased to say the person we have in the role has continued during that time and led and supported and guided a lot of the work that I've described. They report to the Board's Safety and Quality Committee also, separately from other reports from management. They have established the lived experience advisory panel. They've also overseen work such as development of a co-design framework, which has been to both YCPAC and the Service Delivery and Quality Committee of Board.
I want to move to another topic and that was during the course of the hearing, we asked Urala about what policy or practices did it have in transitioning people from group homes into alternative and different accommodation? This was in the context of having a discussion about the ongoing use of group homes as a form of accommodation for people with intellectual disability. Dr Devonessen said at the time that Urala had assisted people to move to independent accommodation in the community through what she described as transition facilities, but there were not enough alternate options available for Urala to assist everyone who might want to move out of a group home. And the Commissioners record that in the hearing report at paragraph 334. And Dr Devonessen said that Urala did not have a standalone policy to review and develop alternatives to the group home model. But she agreed that this was something Urala should look into and that's recorded in the report at paragraph 228. So we understand from your response that Urala now has something called the New Entry, Exit and Relocation Policy, dated the 25th of May 2020. And there's a version two that you've provided to us dated the 27th of July 2022. And Commissioners, that's in bundle N behind tab 10. What's different about the new policy, if any, in terms of Urala's approach to the maintenance of the group home model and/or assisting people who want to leave a group home to transition to new or different accommodation?
I think the policy has a stronger requirement than the previous policy on eliciting the tenants' goals and aspirations in terms of housing and then trying to deliver on those. That is the primary difference that we intended to give effect to.
Over the time since Urala appeared at the Royal Commission, has there been any trends or changes that you can comment on of people who have resided in Urala group homes looking for or moving to alternative accommodation? And if so, what have you seen in that regard?
Roughly 45 people, I think, have transitioned out of group homes over the last three years. The trend that I would say is that we have we have learned that it's more, the support for people to leave a group home, if that is their goal, requires more than just the availability of an alternative physical location. It requires support and advocacy sometimes for their decision-making. It requires the adequacy of funds in their NDIS plan. And there are significant delays for some individuals that we know would like to leave group homes because of some of those factors. We have tried to understand what the current aspirations are of our tenants. We had a third-party survey conducted last year in which tenants were asked where you would like to live, how many people you would like to live with. Fifteen percent of the people who responded to that survey said they wanted to live with only one other person. No one responding to the survey said they wanted to live alone. About a third of the people said they don't know. And that, those responses tell me that there's quite a range of current views and goals and expectations amongst our tenants. But it also tells us there's a significant cohort, 15% would be 40 or 50 tenants, that we can work with who already have expressed through responses to that survey that they would like to live with less people than they currently live with, so we have something to work with.
I don't know if you've followed the proceedings of this hearing over the last few days?
Most of them I have.
One of the issues which I think I attributed to afford, but I meant probably minder, was about the issue of the suitability of the housing stock and the legacy stock. Is that an issue for Urala in terms of the nature of the dwellings and the number of bedrooms and the organisation of the way in which the services are provided in group homes?
The physical state of the fabric, yes it is. So we have homes which, perhaps less because of the number of bedrooms and more because of their design, don't afford all of the tenants the privacy that they might wish. And they have to share amenities, for example, or share common areas. And, you know, it's our expectation based on responses to the survey and conversations with people that people may still want to live with a number of other people in a shared house, but in a different physical, a different design of their house or their home.
What are you going to do looking into the future about those issues? What does that mean for Urala in terms of future planning?
The board's approved, in principle, a proposal to transition our legacy group homes out through partnerships with housing developers. There are now many developers, you know, who are designing and building suitable properties. We think some of those developers may be interested in working with us. We know some of them are interested in working with us, where they might provide the physical location and we might provide the support. That doesn't address all of the criteria needed for people to move, but we think that would be a good start. I might, if I could, draw your attention or attention to the Commissioners to a report published only today, I think, from the Housing Hub and the Summer Foundation, which is, I don't know its exact title, it's something called Towards a Better Model of Shared Living. We think that it's a comprehensive paper that addresses the range of supports that people require for informed choice and a transition out of group homes and we contributed to the development of that paper and agree with its findings.
I think they're coming to tell us about that tomorrow morning.
They can do a much better job than me, Council.
So the next topic I want to ask about is investigations. And Dr Devonessen gave evidence about a range of cases of sexual crimes and incidents of sexual and physical abuse that have been investigated by Urala's internal investigator and evidence about how the internal investigator operated. And Commissioners, you record this at paragraph 232 of the report. And during the course of the hearing, the Chair asked some questions about the independence and qualifications of the internal investigator. Are we right in understanding that following that public hearing that Urala had an opportunity to review the way in which it conducts investigations and both the qualifications of internal investigators and the extent to which external assistance is sought in conducting investigations? Do you want to tell the Royal Commission what's occurred in terms of the way investigations are done and anything about the qualifications of the investigators?
Yes. In early 2021, shortly after I arrived, there was an investigation underway following a whistleblower allegation of abuse at one group home. The whistleblower had resigned from the organisation by the time we were partway through the investigation and at that time was not responding to invitations from the internal investigator to come forward and give evidence. Our people and culture team converted the internal investigation into an external investigation, had an external investigator take over. The whistleblower came forward, gave evidence, the investigation was resolved. I'm pleased to say without, you know, findings that abuse had actually occurred in that case. But it was a learning for us and shortly after that investigation, we put in place a new guideline to indicate that external investigations should occur where there are allegations made about management, as was the case in that whistleblower allegation, and also where allegations are likely to lead to criminal charges, for example.
Next topic was Urala's approach to redress and its guiding principles. And in the Commissioner's Report, at paragraph 343, the Commissioner said... evidence heard by the Royal Commission at public hearing three suggests that there were considerable disparities as to any support, compensation or other forms of redress that were provided by Eurella to a person with disability, and that was in the context of an examination in relation to the response and the difference responses in relation to the victim survivors. And at paragraph six, sorry, we told that, paragraph three hundred and sixty four of the Royal Commissioner's report, they identified the following issues, among others. First, the forms of redress available to people with disability who are subject to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation while residing in group homes or supported accommodation. And whether it's feasible to establish a scheme to provide compensation to people with disability who have sustained serious harm as a consequence of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation in circumstances where no other redress is available. So we understand from your response that in September twenty twenty two, there's now something called the Eurella Redress Working Party. And that's developed a guideline with some principles for responding to victim survivors of abuse. And that's produced in both the standard form but also in easy English, and you've provided copies to us. Can you briefly tell us what, following the hearing, and now the establishment of the Eurella Redress Working Party is doing to address the issues identified by the Royal Commission in public hearing three?
Thanks, counsel. The board has established a working group that includes senior management and two members of board, including a person with a disability, to guide us as we think through how Eurella might develop a more consistent and appropriate response to cases of abuse and complaints related to abuse that might come forward, that is an improvement on the previous response, as discussed in hearing three. We have developed guiding principles at this stage. Those guiding principles are informed partly by our participation in the existing national redress scheme. We have taken that as a starting point because we agree with the principles that are in that scheme or reflected in that scheme. We have conducted an initial consultation on the guiding principles before we go any further with formalising responses. Those consultations include conversations with families of victim survivors, victim survivors and people with disability inside our organisation, where those people are willing to be part of that conversation. And I acknowledge how difficult the topic this is for some of the people that we would, that we might invite to participate. And I thank those who have contributed. We have also engaged a third party, and that is Valid, Victoria's prominent advocacy organisation, particularly for people with intellectual disability, to conduct consultations on our behalf, because we understand how difficult it might be for Eurella, given our history, to get a honest response perhaps, or a kind of direct response from people. We've asked Valid to both develop an easy read version of our principles, which they have done, and conduct initial consultation around those principles, both with people with intellectual disabilities, including two people from group homes, and families, including family members of people who reside in group homes. Only two days ago, we received the initial report of that consultation, and I hope you have a copy of that, counsel. We provided a short report on that.
You did, thank you.
Great. It's hot off the press, as you can tell, but my initial impression of that, and I spoke to the person who led those consultations, is that there was overwhelming support from people with intellectual disability and from families for the principles with some very insightful feedback and suggestions as well. And that, I guess, affirms, I think, the direction that we are going and also strengthens our view that a national redress scheme would be appropriate, and we agree with the comments that were included in the November discussion paper or report from the Royal Commission, where it briefly discussed this question.
So a related topic to that, redress is one thing, but there's also how victims are supported in being able to make a complaint. And also on criminal matters, referrals to the police and support during that process. And you may recall the extent to which referrals are made to other forms of compensation, such as victims' compensation. And one other issue that was raised and also dealt with by the commissioners in their report, at paragraph three hundred and sixty four, was the measures to support people receiving independent advice to enable them to pursue remedies if that's what they wish to do. I wasn't entirely clear whether that is part of the Redress Working Party group or has that been addressed separately? So I think your response at paragraphs twelve to sixteen covered that, but I wasn't quite sure whether all of those issues have been addressed.
And I'm sorry, counsel, is your question whether it's only through the redress work that we are considering that question?
Yes, or are you looking more generally at the supports for victim survivors? The pathways of assisting them if the reporting is to the police or to other areas? And then providing them the opportunity for access to any form of advocacy, I suppose, both in public hearing two, very much looking at it through the lens of legal support, through community legal centres and the like.
Yes. So it is, we are. The way I might put this, counsel, instead of work on redress, I think, is our latest and best thinking that will inform our work across the whole of what the commission has referred to as the complaints landscape, and that includes our policies for handling complaints and incidents and investigations. But I think we are hearing things in feedback on redress that are relevant to other policies.
So would they, just to interrupt there, would they be relevant to policies you provided us referred to as accessing independent disability advocacy procedures manual and advocacy information for customers? Is that where we would find that work?
Well, that is an example. Those procedures are an example of advice that we give to managers inside our organisation now, where they are given directories of resources to which they can direct clients of the organisation around advocacy. And we have existing policies which promote the use of advocacy. I guess our work on redress is informing us about how strongly and how early perhaps we might engage or offer to engage people with that. If I give you an example, I had a conversation recently with the family and with a parent and a victim of an assault that was committed by one of our staff. I'm pleased to say he was promptly terminated and has since been charged. The family was unaware of the outcome of the sentencing, and I met with them to disclose the sentencing. They were kind of pleased to hear about the sentencing, I guess, but were unaware or had not considered what their other options might be. And with the feedback on redress and our work on redress in mind, I was able to encourage the family to consider their options and follow up with a referral to independent legal advice. I don't know that our policies and procedures as they stand now would exactly have indicated that step, but our work on redress, I guess, has made us more mindful of that. And my thinking is that as the redress work comes to a close or as we get further along with it, we have to fold back upon the other policies and check that the principles in there around independence of advice and early support are reflected across all of our policies and procedures.
The document entitled Eurella's Guiding Principles for Responding to Claims Involving Allegations of Abuse contains principle eight. Eurella's initial response will include an offer of support and assistance to access independent legal advice if legal assistance has not been obtained by a victim survivor or their family and friends. Is that a principle that's actually in force now, or is this something that's in draft that is part of the process you're describing?
It is a draft that has received unanimous support from every client and family who has seen it. And I guess the point I was making to counsel commissioner was, I don't know that our existing suite of policies strongly enough reflects that principle that is in our redress principles. And given the level of support we are getting for that principle and and the directions and guidance, including in the November paper from the Royal Commission, I think we need time to reflect on those and build that principle back strongly into all of our existing policies.
Thank you.
Those were my questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bennett?
No questions, thank you.
Yes, one question. Thank you, Mr Simon. When Miss Eastman asked you about a transition away from the model of group home, and you said that you're working, well, you and Eurella are working with designers and builders to develop suitable properties. Can you tell me, of those suitable properties, are they multi-bedroom homes? Can you give me an idea of how many are one bedroom, two bedroom, et cetera?
So we have about thirteen apartments currently on offer. I don't think we have any examples yet of the sort of combined two and three bedroom homes that I know are increasingly available in the market as well. So our view, Commissioner, is that we need the widest possible range of options for people, and that's not yet in place.
Thank you. Just following up on Commissioner McKeown's question, the thirteen that you referred to, they're single occupancy apartments, are they?
That's right.
You referred to a survey, and you indicated that in that survey, none of the respondents expressed a preference to live by themselves. How does that relate to the thirteen separate apartments?
So not all of the people who are going to move into our individual apartments are people who are currently residing in our group homes, Commissioner. So our survey was a survey of existing clients of Eurella. And their responses to that survey tell me something about people with a history of living together in group homes and what they might be looking for next. But there are people entering the NDIS and entering the market for accommodation now who don't have that history and experience in group homes and may well be, and in fact are interested in living independently on their own individually, and we're very happy to support them in that if we can.
So in your experience, there's a disparity between the preferences of those who have not experienced group home living and those who have?
Yes, I do think that, Commissioner, and I think it's a very interesting question, and it's one which we explored with Summer and other partners in the publication I mentioned, that I think the NDIS has probably responded to an initial surge in demand for individual living, but has not yet fully grappled with the needs of a cohort of participants who have perhaps spent much of their adult lives living together and have goals and expectations for some form of shared living, but for whom we can do better than the existing group homes.
I see. And the survey that was conducted, how many people were asked to respond? What proportion did? Did they receive assistance in order to respond to the survey?
I can supply you with the actual numbers. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, Commissioner, but I'm pleased to say that we, for the first time, had a third party survey firm conduct the survey instead of us conducting it ourselves. And that survey firm attended on site in some of the group homes to provide independent assistance to people in completing surveys. And I think that methodology is one that should be of interest across the sector in terms of getting responses to surveys like this in future.
All right. Well, I think it would be helpful for us to have a copy of the report of that survey, and I'm sure that can be arranged with the Office of Solicitor assisting.
I think we've provided it already, but I'll check, and if we haven't, we certainly will.
I do have a follow up question, thank you, Chair. So those people that are existing residents in your group homes, your quite large group homes, do you think it's because they've never had that alternative experience? That they would, so it's not really a choice, because that's all they know, isn't it?
Commissioner, I think that there's a couple of different elements involved here. One is an element of informed choice, and I think this applies to accommodation, it applies to employment. I think there are many people who feel safe in existing congregate settings, or what the commission might refer to as segregated settings, who haven't had the experience of other alternative settings to make an informed choice. And one of the jobs for us in the sector is to provide those opportunities for people. It's not to say to them that that is a better alternative, it's to provide them with the experiences to inform their choice. But there are other elements here as well. I have spoken with the family, for example, of a victim survivor of abuse. And I asked the family the direct question as to why they considered that their loved one should still stay in a Eurella group home, given the experience they'd had. And their response to me was that I didn't understand the history and the previous experience of their family member living in an institution and how difficult that had been. And they considered that the group home was now their home, and that was the place that they had come to after an institution, and they were determined to make it as good as they can be. And their view was therefore Eurella has to work as hard as it can to make that home as good as it can be, rather than have them leave the home. And so people's attachment to existing homes and locations is not something that I underestimate. And, you know, people have a whole range of emotional and psychological attachments to these places, and it's our job to understand those, I think, and respond.
So you could also conclude that those people that are seeking to live alone or maybe with one other person are people who have not been institutionalised and therefore are in a better position to make a genuine choice.
I don't necessarily make that assumption. I'm mindful of the advice of others that people can be institutionalised, living alone. And we don't understand, and I don't presume to judge the costs and benefits for individuals. I think there are risks involved in every form of accommodation. Professor Bigby gave evidence at hearing three that the evidence is not yet in on any form of accommodation, being better or worse. It is how supports are provided in any setting which is the key. And we strongly support Professor Bigby's advice around that.
Thank you very much for returning to the commission. It seems that there have been some significant developments since public hearing three took place. And speaking for myself, I'm very pleased to hear about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Ms Eastman, do we take a short break?
Could we take an adjournment for, say, ten, fifteen minutes?
Yes. All right, it's just before twelve, so if we resume at twelve fifteen.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Ms East.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. So we turn to our second panel of the day. Mr Swain has returned. And you'll see that we're also joined by Annie Doyle, who is the Chief Executive Officer of Civic Disability Services Limited. I think, Ms Doyle, you've done your oaths or affirmations, is that right?
Yes, well, thank you, Mr Swain, for returning. Thank you, Ms Doyle, for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence today as part of a panel of two. We look forward to your evidence, and I shall now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions.
So, Ms Doyle, I'll start with you with some introductions. So you joined Civic as the CEO in May twenty fifteen.
Correct.
Might just have to keep your voice up a little bit.
Correct.
And you have more than twenty years' experience as a management professional, including eight years in not-for-profit disability organisations. That includes three years with Sunnyfield as the Chief Finance Officer and the Chief Operating Officer, is that right?
That's correct.
And you have a Bachelor of Business and an Executive MBA, is that right? Now, about Civic, so Civic Disability Services Limited, known as Civic, was a not-for-profit organisation founded in the nineteen fifties by a group of parents caring for children with disability in the Sutherland Shire.
That's correct.
And over time, Civic has increased significantly. And it now operates exclusively in New South Wales.
That's right.
Your head office is in Carring Bar. And according to your report to the ACNC, you employ you employ nine hundred and thirty-six staff on a casual, part-time and full-time basis, is that right?
So, um, we have, uh, that's correct. And I would say that most of those, I think twenty-five percent are in the casual realm. Seventy-five percent are permanent, full-time, or permanent, yeah.
So twenty-five percent casual?
Correct.
And the balance being permanent, part-time or permanent, full-time, is that right?
And we barely use agency at all.
All right. And I think what we don't know from the information provided to us is how many, and I'll use the expression we've used in the notices, service users. So how many people with disability does Civic support?
So we have approximately five hundred service users at any one time, and some of them use multiple services.
And what are the natures of, nature of the services that Civic provides?
So we are in SIL, Accommodation Services, we're in Community Services, one-to-one and drop-in supports, and we are also in Supported Employment.
Now, uh, on the information that you've provided to the Royal Commission, are we right in understanding that for the relevant period there were a hundred and seven complaints and sixty, sixty-three of the complaints related to safety issues? That's tab eighteen, page seven.
That's correct.
Right, so that figure's accurate.
That's correct.
All right. Now, uh, I do want to ask both of you about your particular policies around complaint, dealing with complaints. And I want to work through those policies in terms of how they apply at a practical level. But, Miss Doyle, before I do that, uh, the Royal Commission is aware and would be, many people would be aware of a story on the seven thirty report earlier this week. You're aware of that?
Yes, I am.
And Commissioners, um, I just give a warning now that, um, the material that I need to deal with, with Miss Doyle may be traumatic and distressing. And again, if the Royal Commission's content warning could go up, that would be appreciated. So, um, Miss Doyle, you are obviously aware of a coronial inquest that was conducted by the New South Wales Coroner into the death of Alex Jeremy Raikman.
Yes.
And he was eleven years old when he died on the twenty-second of April twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
And the coronial inquiry was held last year between the nineteenth and the twenty-ninth of April.
Correct.
And you received a copy of the coroner's findings on the twenty-first of October twenty twenty-two.
Yes, I did.
Uh, Commissioners and those following the proceedings, that the copy of the cor- coronial findings and reasons are publicly available on the coroner's website. Now, uh, having received the coronial findings in October last year, can we assume that Civic and you in particular paid very careful attention to the matters identified by the coroner, where the coroner identified failings on behalf of Civic in relation to Alex's death? Is that right?
Yes.
And, uh, when the seven thirty report, uh, dealt with its story on Tuesday, I think, this week, a statement was provided by Civic Disability Services, which is available publicly on the A B C website, and I've given you a copy of that.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioners, I don't know if this would assist. It is publicly available, but, um, we have a copy that can bring up, will bring up on the screen. So you're familiar with this statement?
Yes, I am.
Did you prepare the statement?
Yes, I did.
So you wrote it yourself?
Yes, I did.
And you gave careful thought as to what you wanted to include in the statement?
Yes.
Did you get any advice on this statement? Who did you get advice from?
I had, um, my, um, impact and design G M um assist with the writing of it, just to ensure that we used, um, appropriate wording, and it was reviewed by our lawyers.
Oh, your lawyers as well?
Yeah.
And, uh, you knew that this would be a public statement?
Yes.
And you knew that this might be a statement not only read by the family, but also by the general public, is that right?
That's correct.
So I just want to take you to some parts of the statement and understand what these things mean and what Civic has done. The second paragraph says, since two thousand and eight, Civic has been committed to the full involvement in internal and external reviews to ensure we learnt from this tragic accident. First thing is, why have you described Alex's death as a tragic accident in light of the coroner's findings?
I believe that for us, i- it was a tra- tragedy that flowed from, uh, the, you know, the lack of, um, important, uh, processes and procedures that weren't followed. And, um, to me, this tragedy was not something that was planned or, um, for us, it was, it wasn't meant to happen. We didn't set out for this to happen. It was, in our eyes, it was a tragedy. And we have, since two thousand and eighteen, not since the coronial findings, but since two thousand and eighteen, we have taken, um, extensive measures to ensure that we learnt from what happened, um, to Alex. And, um, there's not, um, I understand the family's grief and we, particularly being a mother myself.
Can I just, uh, my question was fairly, I hope, fairly clear. Why do you describe it as an accident in light of the coroner's findings?
I believe it, uh, maybe I haven't described it as well as I could, but I've, I, for us, that is, it was tragic and it was an accident.
Well, I accept you when you say that no one intended this to happen, but it was fairly clear from the findings, was it not, that it was preventable? You agree with that?
Coroner did say that.
Now, in terms of internal and external reviews, who or what has been the external review process?
Who?
Who or what?
We had several parties review our external processes, our, our processes, sorry, and, um, we hired them and all of those reports. They were disc- that, we did the Belton Report, and we did another one with another company after that, the name escapes me. But those, those reports were tabled, um, f- full disclosure, and we put action plans in place from day one.
So were, were these, uh, external reviews directed to any support for the family and any redress for the family?
So I tried to reach out to the family.
No, I'm, no, no.
Sorry.
Step it back.
Yeah.
I'm asking you about the external reviews. Was any part of an external review directed at what support or redress should be provided to the family?
I, I would like to say that there were recommendations, however, the family was not open to receiving.
From an external review?
Correct.
Now, uh, just dropping down a bit, uh, the paragraph starts, in twenty twenty-two, Civic committed fully to the coronial process and submitted significant evidence to the coroner for consideration. And then you say Civic has also complied with all of its obligations, including notifying and cooperating with Safe Work New South Wales. Do you see that? Um, when you say Civic is fully committed to the coronial process, that process has now been complete?
Yes.
But you don't say anywhere in this statement that you accept in full the coroner's findings that were adverse to you personally and to Civic. Do you agree?
That is an oversight, yes.
It's an oversight.
I, I should have said that in this.
But you haven't said that, have you?
No.
And it was an opportunity in making a public statement to indicate whether you personally and Civic accepted the findings of the coroner and accepted the responsibilities that flow from that. Do you agree?
I have offered a sincere apology to the family and accepted our guilt at that, at the front end of the coronial. I was clear. So whilst I may not have said it in this statement, I have said it out loud in the coroner's court. And I, I think that, um, I, I could have said it better in the statement, yes, but I also wasn't aware that the seven thirty was going to run a report.
When you say in the next paragraph, recommendations provided by the coroner in twenty twenty-two have already been adopted by Civic, can I be clear in understanding what you mean by that? Do you mean that, uh, the recommendations adopted by the coroner you'd already addressed before the coronial inquiry and findings? Or do you mean the recommendations provided by the coroner in twenty twenty-two have been acted on since you received the coronial findings in October?
From the minute the accident occurred, we have turned over everything, everything. And so in two thousand and eighteen, we did a full gap analysis. That gap analysis formed the basis for our review of everything to do with risk, policy, procedure, property, uh, ways of working. And that, so when the findings came down from the coroner, we had done many of the recommendations that the cor- cor- coroner put forward. The last one outstanding was the understanding about our voluntary out-of-home care status. And that has also been dealt with now.
Have you published anywhere on your website or in any other public forum what you have done in relation to responding to the coroner's recommendations? And how in detail you've responded to each of those recommendations? Have you done that?
I'm not sure. I, I probably have not.
Has any particular employee or, uh, officer of Civic been disciplined in relation to the circumstances of Alex's death? Or following the findings of the coroner's, the criticisms made by the coroner? Has any disciplinary action been taken?
We had, some staff have since left Civic Service.
Have any board members resigned as a result of the coroner's finding and taking responsibility for what occurred?
No.
And you remain a C E O, is that right?
That's correct.
Can I ask you now, uh, about, uh, the second last paragraph in the statement? And you say here, the death of Alex is a reminder of the high risks involved in providing disability support work. What do you mean by that?
Well, um, every disability service provider has a, um, has multiple sites where they deliver services in a community care environment. That requires then a distributed workforce. When you have a distributed workforce, what happens is that you rely on policies, procedures, process, culture, um, risk treatment plans, intervention plans, things that are all human, human service related. And so you have, if I was working in a manufacturing environment, I would have, I would be able to automate and rule out all risk. But by its very nature, the N D I S is about providing additional support for, to those people who have disability. That additional support is, is human in nature.
Do you not think that there's something fundamentally misconceived in understanding the nature of risk? To describe the child as the risk rather than understanding that the risk arises because of the way in which the service provider conducts its business?
I'm not describing Alex as the risk.
But you are saying publicly that the death of Alex is a reminder of the high risks involved. What else could that possibly mean?
It, it means that we have to take very seriously our service delivery in a human services environment. And that is something that I do not take lightly.
Can I ask you whether the following two sentences is an attempt by you to try to excuse or evade Civic's liability? Firstly, are you seeking to evade responsibility by suggesting that more funding is required? And secondly, are you trying to evade responsibility by suggesting that this is the only incident of its type that has occurred in Civic's history? What, what are the purposes of saying these things publicly?
I think we are not evading our responsibility. We've taken this very seriously. Every staff member at Civic have grieved over the loss of Alex. It's not something that we take lightly, and we do not want to abrogate our responsibility at all. And I think the fact that we have spent so much time and effort in reviewing everything, everything at Civic, has meant that we have developed, I think, r- really a, a fundamental way of working that, for me, will rule out incidents of this type ever occurring again.
Is there any reason why you have not acknowledged any regret, any apology or expressed any sorrow for the loss of Alex to his family? There's no apology in here, is there?
I rang Alex's mother and left.
Um, there is no apology in the public statement, is there?
Apologies, I, I.
You have not apologised to the family?
I had already apologised to Alex's family at the coronial. I'm happy to apologise again. I will go on record as being apologetic about this incident. I, I have no issue in saying that I got it wrong.
Have you apologised to the community for letting a young man with disability down?
Yes, I think I have.
Apologised to the community? Thank you. All right, Commissioners, I'll turn to the topic that I want to deal with.
I, I've just one question from me following up. I don't know what Miss Eastman has asked you. Someone has just read this document recently. The sentence that says, as a sector, we need to ensure adequate funding and support are in place for individual families and the organisations delivering care. When I read that, I understood that to mean that somehow inadequate funding had some relationship, uh, to the death of Alex. Uh, is that what you were intending to convey?
I think what I would like to say is that when the N D I S was created, it was created based on an outcomes model. So it was about goals and achieving outcomes. But I think it's, it's, it's now more about the funding received and ensuring services delivered equal those funding um, agreements. So I feel that the, the areas that we are going to talk about today that require, um, a lot of training, a lot of forethought around how you can get relationships and achieve those really important relationships to hear the client voice, that is not part of our funding and support. It's something that we choose to do as an organisation, but that it's not recognised as a funding line in the N D I S.
But the juxtaposition of that sentence with the preceding s- sentence would suggest uh, to, uh, a reader that somehow inadequate funding had something to do with Alex's death.
I think that
Do you not agree with that?
Risk treatment and the whole spectrum of delivering services as safely as possible is, is of paramount importance. And so part of that then is, what I'm trying to say there is that, you know, we have to ensure as a sector. I, I think, you know, Civic are lucky that we, we have, you know, the, the skill set in-house to deliver this. There are smaller providers who are delivering great services who may not have these opportunities.
Yes, all right. Well, I was actually asking you about these two sentences, but thank you. Yes, Miss East.
So, Miss Doyle, I want to ask you about your complaints processes. The Commissioners have got behind tab twenty-one in hearing bundle H, a copy of the Civic Feedback Disputes and Complaints Guide. Have you got that?
Yes.
Uh, and were you here earlier this morning when the other panel, uh, gave evidence? All right. So your, uh, policy uses different language, feedback and complaints. And complaint and feedback, serious complaint and dispute are defined in the document, see that? Why is a distinction made between a complaint, feedback, serious complaint and dispute?
I think it goes to how we manage those.
So, so that's really for convenience of Civic as to how you're going to manage the subject matter?
Well, I think it's also for training of staff so they understand what, what, what they're hearing and how they can, um, understand and how they can act appropriately.
Then over the page, this is a policy about feedback disputes and a complaint guide. But it then tells you the types of matters that will not be registered as a complaint. Now, looking at that list, some of these matters would squarely be the sorts of things that might give rise to not only feedback or a complaint, but also a serious complaint. Why is it that these important matters in the dot points on page two are excluded?
Um, because there are. Um because there are other avenues for those. They may well be notifiable incidents or they may be they may be outside the remit of a complaint.
Why.
Because they have different ways of being handled.
But i- but isn't the purpose of a complaints policy to assist the person who wants to raise. Feedback, a grievance, a concern or a complaint to know, can I just finish please. To know what they need to do and what they can do. So I'm asking you, why will these not be registered as as a complaint.
In particular.
A request for services unless it is the second request and there's been no response to the first. That might that might be a a very significant reason why somebody would.
So a request for services is a complaint. I'm sorry, is that what you're saying.
Yes, why would it not be registered as a complete.
A request for services would go through our customer experience team to go through to onboarding. So it becomes part of the customer journey.
Why wouldn't a request for information or an explanation of policy guides and instructions. If someone was feeling aggrieved that they didn't know what that was or what, why wouldn't that be treated.
If they were feeling aggrieved, it would go to complaint. If they're not feeling aggrieved, if they're just requesting information, it stays as a request for information.
Right. And who determined in the drafting of this policy. That the matters on page two, the dot points, would not be registered as a complaint.
That would have been discussed with the with the team and and they would have decided that these these have other avenues.
Right. One other mechanism that you have a specific policy for that seems to exclude. People or things from the complaint procedure is the document behind tab twenty two. And that's entitled managing unreasonable complaint conduct procedure. Are you aware of that.
Yes.
Now, this was last reviewed on the tenth of August twenty twenty two.
Great.
Is this part of the review that was done internally and externally in response to the incidents concerning Alex.
Not not specifically concerning Alex.
In what circumstances uh would an organisation such as Civic. Wanting to uh wanting to use something called an unreasonable complainant complaint procedure.
So the only time we use this procedure is when um so I, not only do we have an obligation to. Clients, we also have an obligation to staff. And where um complaints go to an abusive. Type of complaint, then we endorse this, the use of this protocol.
I'm just looking at the date here, the tenth of August twenty twenty two. Were you involved in uh the review of the managing unreasonable complainant conduct procedure. Did you review it.
I would have reviewed it.
And by that stage, had you followed or were you aware. Of the uh Royal Commission's Public Hearing thirteen in relation to Sunnyfield.
I was, we followed it closely.
And were you, do you recall the evidence where Sunnyfield described a complainant as querulent.
We do not use that language.
You don't remember.
I do remember hearing that. We do not use that language.
So is this managing unreasonable complainant conduct procedure for querulent complaints.
Definitely not. Definitely. I'm talking about work health and safety here, where it's abusive and where it's. Um undermines the service delivery because Civic endorsed human centered design principles and that means. Not only for clients but also for staff. Happy staff, happy clients. So what we're about is ensuring. That this type of conduct is not okay for staff.
But this is a policy not about an unreasonable complaint. This is about an unreasonable complainant. So this is a policy, I've, can I just say, I've never seen a policy like this. This is why I'm asking.
So.
That there is a policy that describes who is an unreasonable complainant. Is this.
Well, so the the proof is that we've obviously had someone within our organisation, a a a. Family member who was abusive and who was undermining service delivery. And we had to look at an opportunity to ensure that we followed a protocol. So that we we addressed that situation. And this is the fruit of that. And we have hardly. Used it at all bar in that circumstance.
So this was a policy designed in response to one.
No, not not designed in response to one. We've had we've had several over time, but this this this. This is part of making sure that staff are safe and well cared for. So that they can do what we need them to do and that is have great relationships with clients.
What's uh what's abusive about reframing a complaint in an effort to get it taken up again.
Because it's it's not, it's not the once, it's the number of times that it gets reframed.
This is not what this says.
It may not have been stated as clearly as it should have.
Complaint in an effort to get it taken up again. It qualifies as unreasonable.
I I think. The these things can be subjective and I think that for us, use of this is when. All else has failed, when the relationship has effectively failed and. We think that they would be better served with another provider.
That's the sort of thing that lawyers do all the time.
Policy doesn't say that it's sort of last resort. It said this procedure applies to all complainants. Whose conduct is determined as unreasonable under this procedure. And as my understanding of the way in which this occurs, that might be. A matter that makes its way to you to determine whether the complainant's unreasonable, is that right.
I think, walking in our shoes, we would see the number of issues that are raised. This is this is not an overnight thing. This happens after many months of trying to build the relationship. So this is this is the end of that relationship.
Could I put this to you. Is this part of a culture in Civic where you see the risk as people. Rather than the risk in the way Civic does its business.
No, we're very clear about how we see risk.
Uh Mister Swain, sorry, you've been sitting there very patiently. Uh Endeavour also has. A policy that um speaks to the concept of frivolous or vexatious complaints. I don't know if you've got your copy of the feedback compliments and complaints policy. So. This is a policy which is encouraging some nice things to be said, is that right. As well as complaints.
Absolutely. All all feedback is welcome.
So do we do we have this.
Yes, you do. It's behind tab twenty seven.
Thank you.
Or twenty eight. So in terms of uh the way in which complaints are characterised, we. Discussed this a little earlier this morning, but do you in this policy make uh. Or form a view that a person is uh an unreasonable complainant. And you do have on the procedural fairness second paragraph. Recognising there may be instances of frivolous or vexatious complaints made to organisations. You say these complaints will not be dismissed without due consideration to ensure genuine issues are not overlooked. Uh but what what is the process. I couldn't find that you had an unreasonable complainant's policy.
No, not at all. And and typically, when you determine on whether something's frivolous or vexatious is after a a. Due procedure and uh permitting that natural justice. As it's referred to in the in the procedure.
So um i- isn't it often the case that the very nature of a complaint might be, as I asked you earlier this morning. Uh the last straw.
Yes.
And is it not uncommon that people who have reached the last straw. May present as perhaps reacting maybe disproportionately to the one issue that's arisen. But unless there is the care and time taken to understand why that distress exists. To understand the nature of trauma that might manifest in how a person presents or behaves. That it would be premature to make a decision that somebody was an unreasonable or querulent complainant. Would you agree with that.
I couldn't agree more.
Would you agree with that, Miss Doyle.
I agree.
Uh can I ask you whether or not an understanding of trauma and the impact of trauma over a long period of time. Was taken into account by anybody in August last year. When the unreasonable complainant procedure was reviewed.
We do trauma informed care. We understand, we understand. The basis of that and we understand the history of people within our services who have. Had significant trauma in their lives and we do bring that into play in these situations. And as I've stated. We have rarely ever had to invoke this policy.
Well, you've reviewed it in August last year and my question was, in reviewing it, did you give consideration. To an understanding of how trauma can be a lifelong condition. You did.
We understand that, yes.
All right. Now, assuming that somebody picks up the policy, so Mister Swain, they pick up your policy. And that they want to make a complaint. Does this feedback policy tell uh the person exactly what's going to happen if they make a complaint.
This policy doesn't say, well, it says that once a complaint is lodged. A complaints handling officer will be uh allocated and that person will be in contact directly with the complainant.
So in terms of a person saying to Endeavour, I want I wanna make a complaint. I'm not sure whether I'd describe it as a feedback or a serious complaint or an informal complaint, but I want to raise something. And the person says, but I'd also like to know in advance. What that means for me in terms of what I'm gonna have to do, the information I have to provide. And you heard my questions earlier about what the outcome would be. This policy doesn't set that out. So where is that person going to find the information that they might need. Before they decide to make a complaint.
That's that's a a good question and I would expect that um. Either the staff member, the person taking the complaint, could make that referral to our safeguarding team to talk through the process. To give an um an option as to whether they wish to continue with that complaint.
So it it what. What do you mean by whether they continue with the complaint. So does that bring them to a dead end early.
Sorry, as I understand from your question, that if the complainant's looking to understand what the. Likely process will be for uh management of the complaint.
Mm hmm.
Those in our safeguarding team are are best described, uh best placed to describe that.
Right. The other document that you've got behind tab twenty eight, Commissioners, is the. Feedback Complaints and Compliments Management Procedure. Is that publicly available. So would that be something that somebody who wanted to know what's going to happen if I make a complaint. That they would have access to this or is it internal.
Sorry.
Is it in just internal for the complaints unit or something.
Uh I believe what's publicly available on our website is our policy, not our procedure.
Okay. Is there any reason why this procedure couldn't be available publicly.
Um I'm not aware. I'd I'd have to take that on notice.
All right. The procedure uh seeks to categorise the complaints based on the seriousness of the complaint. Is that right.
Yes.
And in terms of the procedure of submitting a complaint. The poli- the management procedure says that regardless of whether it is a big or small issue, all feedback is treated seriously, welcomed and valued. What at what point in the assessment process does feedback turn into a complaint. Is it. The nature of the feedback or is it something about. Uh the person about whom the feedback's being made. What is it that moves it from feedback into something that. Might give rise to an investigation.
Uh I would believe that it would be something um in its nature that's requiring. Uh some form of of resolution, uh maybe uh critical in nature, um. Yes.
And then if it's serious enough to proceed to an investigation. What happens to the complaint from there on. Is it, for example, a process where the investigation will be conducted. And at the end of the process, the complainant might find out what happened. Or is the complainant involved in the process the whole way along.
Um yes, the complainant's involved in the process the whole way along. As soon as a a complaint is lodged, it's put onto our. Uh internal risk management uh system. And within the day, it's reviewed by our safeguarding team, who allocate a complaints handling officer. Who makes timely contact with the complainant. And we do have guidelines you will see there around regular communication. But clearly involvement in the complaint, including identifying um uh uh expected. Resolutions or outcomes.
Now, Miss Doyle, uh can I turn to your Feedback Disputes and Complaints Guide. So assuming that the, I'm not an unreasonable complainant and uh my complaint might be received. I can make a complaint in any way, can't I, in person, on the phone, on the website, but also via social media.
Make, you can.
And an advocate or representative can make a complaint, is that right. And your policy says that you can make a complaint or give feedback in a survey. What does that mean. And what surveys are you referring to.
Put out surveys and we assist clients to um. Uh fill in those surveys. Uh they can do it with their family member, they can do it with an advocate. And it's for them so that we are sure that they're understanding.
Then there is a a process internally of registering the complaint and and having it in the database. Generally, the policy requires complaints to be resolved within a month. But if additional time's required, that's available. In terms of the way in which most complaints are addressed, are they just sort of dealt with by a discussion with the person concerned. Or is it your policy that that any complaint has to be subject to an investigation.
So all complaints come in through our hype management system or so however we receive the complaint, they are logged. And they are then triaged a bit, as Mister Swain described, that triaged and the appropriate. Um person can 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 be sought to effect a remedy with the person involved. The allocation of the feedback complaint um is based on the. The um how how serious the matter is, so.
Sorry, who determines the seriousness of the matter.
We have, it goes through our quality and risk team and the. We also not only look at this complaint, but we also look at the trend to see if there are any further things that could be impacting. At this site or with this particular client, so that we we understand the bigger picture rather than just. You know, this one off.
And and are we right in understanding that under the civic policy. That how a complaint might be treated might also depend on to whom the complaint concerns. So there might be different processes of addressing the complaint if it's a staff member. If it's a complaint involving a board member or a C E O. Or a complaint that might concern another person with disability receiving the same services. So why are there different processes in relation to the way complaints are dealt with. We're depending on uh the the respondent to.
So that we can give total um uh autonomy to the decision making. We do not want to restrict. The opportunity for the voice to be heard. We don't want total overview by myself. You know, we want um people in the organisation. Um if it's a staff related matter, it will sit through H R. But if it's a board related matter, then often, you know, there is the whistleblower and there is the company secretary who would feel that. So that it's outside the remit of the board.
And uh in terms of investigations, are we right in understanding that. There's not a dedicated investigations team at Civic.
There is a dedicated team.
There is. But there's something about the levels of delegation, so that investigations could be done by lower level staff members.
Often if a complaint comes in and it's at the at the at the site and it's uh something. You know, the mirror's not straight. I'm I'm making this up. But that can be dealt with immediately. It doesn't, it still gets registered. Everything gets registered. But um it it can be dealt with immediately and that then it's closed at the same time. Um but if it's a significant complaint, it can be quite complex. And it does need to be escalated so that I understand what the what is going on. And it forms part of our analysis around, you know, what is actually going on at that site. Is there more. Should we. Should we look further than just what we're hearing. So so we take every complaint very seriously.
I- is is the way in which you approach complaints. Putting the interests of the complainant at the heart. putting the interests of the complainant at the heart of everything you do? Or is, because the way you just described that might suggest that the approach to dealing with complaints is also looking at where there may be issues for the organisation. So maybe your liability, maybe.
No, I hear what you're saying. No, absolutely. So when a complaint occurs, and sometimes, you know, a lot of our clients are non-verbal. So for them to broach these issues with us, i- is it does require supports. And so when we get a complaint, we actively listen to the person making the complaint. We spend a lot of time and effort to hear what what is what it is that they're saying and what they would like to see as the outcome. So we never walk away from a complaint just sending it off to H R. We actively listen and support the person making the complaint.
Mister Swain, just picking up on that point that some of the people who may wish to make a complaint uh may not be able to communicate in written English or verbally. And your Customer Safeguarding Incident Management Procedure, that's behind tab thirty one in the bundle at page two, says that where a customer has difficulty expressing their views or recollecting events or where preventative measures may impact on a person's choice and control, the person must be allocated an advocate to assist them through the process to ensure person a person-centred approach. And there's the uh employee, employees can contact the complex case hub. Uh what was the thinking in terms of saying for particular complainants, including complainants who may have difficulty recollecting events, but they must have an advocate to assist them in the process?
Uh the the thinking behind this is to ensure that um complainants are supported uh through through any process of complaint. Fundamentally important, and I think we were discussing it earlier, around the power relationship and power dynamic, is that someone has someone on their side ensuring that their voice is heard. That's the thinking around that one.
And in terms of the advocates, what do you mean by advocacy? External advocates, internal advocates, family members, what what do you mean by advocate?
Sorry. Yeah, it's it's multiple. And uh that includes family, uh appropriate family. But certainly uh external advocacy, if that's what the the client uh requests. And we will facilitate access to external advocacy. We've done that on twenty separate occasions in the past year. But it's not always easy to access external advocates. So with our complex support team, we provide social work support. So we can provide some internal advocacy in the interim until an external advocate can be appointed.
Right. And Miss Doyle, your uh Feedback Disputes and Complaints Guide refers to a principle of feedback and complaint handling being to ensure support and or advocacy is available to any client who makes a complaint. That's a little different to Endeavour because it's either support and or advocacy, but it's not a guaranteed right to advocacy, is that right?
If they have um close family supports, then we deem that sufficient. But if they re- if they don't have close family supports, we will absolutely provide an advocate.
In terms of uh investigating any complaint that might arise between disability service users, where both uh parties to the complaint may need support and advocacy support, how do you uh approach those circumstances and how do they fit into the complaint handling procedures, Miss Doyle?
So can you just rephrase that?
So if it's a com- if it's a complaint and the complaint concerns two service users, so two people with disability, both who may require some support or advocates in the process, how does your policy work in those circumstances?
So both people have the right to um advocacy in those situations. The other thing I would say is, in those circumstances, we have we have a clinical team and we have psychologists and behavioural support practitioners on site, should should they be required. So immediate steps would be to call in the clinical team. Longer term, it would be to find those appropriate supports to allow both sides to be heard.
Right, so it. How how is that done in practice? So what would it look like in in the course of an investigation?
Am I taking an example of two supported employees who are fighting, let's say, and they complain about each other? I'll give that as an example. So they are separated and then they are both heard separately. Ask what the complaint is, why, what would they like to see happen? Sometimes it's as simple as they don't want to stand next to the next person whilst doing their work. It's an easy one to resolve. Other things are much more complex and it may involve their home environment, it may involve bullying or all those things. So we look at the whole, we look at each person's individual complaint and we we take them from scratch as if, you know, it it wouldn't matter that it's another client. So so we we look at each individually and we we accord them both the respect of listening to them and then trying to come to a resolution together.
Right. And do you know, uh on average, looking at the numbers of complaints that you've told us about, are they complaints that meet your timeframe of being resolved within a month, which I think is the policy for Civic?
So we we flag when they go past those timeframes and it's um all of that gets reported to our subcommittee, our risk subcommittee and also to our board. And those flags are really important because we wanna understand why there's a delay. And sometimes it can be a delay because we're waiting on a neurosurgeon to get back to us or a, you know, there's there's some intervening allied health professional that hasn't filled in a form and so we can't close the the issue. But but so so under normal circumstances, we do like to see a complaint resolved and that the client has accepted the outcome or has been part of the outcome of that complaint.
Right. Mister Swain, have you got timeframes you measure outcomes in terms of complaint handling?
We do have timeframes, um but I can't tell you what our average resolution timeframe is. Um and I am aware that there are more complex complaints that I'm aware of in the past year that would have exceeded um the timeframes that we've stipulated. I think it's around twenty five days is the maximum timeframe for resolution.
Right. Now, with the outcomes of complaints, and Mister Swain partly raises with you a little earlier, so I'll ask Miss Doyle. What are the outcomes of a complaint? What can happen if somebody makes a complaint and their complaint is substantiated?
So it depends what the the complaint is about, obviously. But should should the um outcome be substantiated, and it is in any way, shape or form um to do with their living environment or to do with their work environment or community setting, then we look to how we can address that or provide appropriate um um outcomes for that client. Now, sometimes it may be big, it may be like that they wanna leave the property that they're living at and want to live somewhere else. So we would have to put them through our onboarding again to see where an appropriate matching would apply for them and if that is what they would be happy with. So it's all done in conjunction with that person. And and at all times, we ask if that is the outcome that they want to receive.
What if um the complaint that they make and the complaint that's substantiated results in Civic as an organisation failing to meet its duty of care or failing to protect uh a human rights, a breach of privacy? What are the outcomes that the complainant can seek from Civic?
So if it's if it's that dire, obviously they can they can go through all the formal channels um and we will support them to do that. Any notifiable incidents would be.
Just asking what the outcomes would be.
If Civic is in breach, then we deserve to have the penalties that are provided at law to 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 to.
Well, this is your own com- internal complaint handling.
Internal complaints?
So you, no doubt, when you're investigating a complaint, you're also investigating what Civic might have done.
Correct.
Poorly, what Civic might have done to prevent something occurring. So assuming the outcome of an investigation is that the finding is that Civic has failed in some respect to the person. Say if it's failed to protect their privacy or caused um an injury or harm, what outcomes under your policy are available for the person who's made the complaint against Civic?
First and foremost, an apology, um a a a hearing of our our failure.
Why are you making an apology?
To the client if they if they feel that we haven't done, that they've complained and it's proven that we failed and our.
Do you ask the client first whether they want an apology?
We would ask them exactly what outcome they would like to receive.
And if they don't want an apology, you wouldn't make one, would you?
Well, no, but if they if that's what they want, then I would apologise. If they want um some type of redress, then we would work towards achieving that. But it would be based on what they want.
Alright, so say if they said that they would like some financial compensation or they'd like disciplinary action to be taken against somebody senior in the organisation. Would that be redress open to them under your complaints procedure?
I think everything is open, it's whether or not it's endorsed by, you know, everybody uh around that. So we would have to explain to them um that some things we can do automatically, other things we would have to seek advice on and and look at those opportunities.
Right. And Mister Swain, for your organisation, so using that scenario that it's not at a lower level, but this is Endeavour has failed to meet its duty of care, what would be the options in those circumstances for redress?
So our feedback procedure does uh build in uh likely outcomes or redress which include uh apology or uh financial uh compensation. Throughout the process also, we build in access to counselling and and psychological support. Um. If we consider also the environment of our supported employment, redress or outcome might take on different features there. And that might relate to uh the role, the roster, remuneration. So there's many different aspects in that environment and that's where there's crossover into our more of an industrial relations environment.
Uh Commissioner, I'm just conscious of the time, so I'll cease my questions now in case the commissioners have got any questions they wish to ask.
Commissioner McKeown, do you have any questions?
Uh one. Uh, Miss Doyle, I wanted to understand better one of your responses to Miss Eastman's question about the statement. Could we please have the statement put back up on the screen?
You mean the personal, the media role?
Yeah, the the Civic statement, uh thank you, the second to last paragraph. Miss Eastman asked you, what did you mean by the sentence, the death of Alex is a reminder of the high risk involved in providing disability support work? And I'm just, I want to understand, on what basis do you describe, well, why do you describe disability support work as high risk?
Because it's a human service and it means that in a distributed environment where people are not in one building, they're they're they're, we we have sixty one sites. And so when you are working with people at separate sites, you are by its very, you you have to have great process, great procedure and great culture to ensure and that people are well trained in your policies and your procedures to to make sure that we safeguard all clients and that we 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 also safeguard our staff. So so you are operating in a distributed manner.
Safeguarding your staff, uh please bear with me, I'm really trying to understand. When you say safeguarding your staff, as opposed to a human working with a human, I'm I really am struggling. I I need to understand better your basis, the basis of what you mean by high risk.
A human working with a human is exactly what it is. It's exactly what it is and a human has the power to make decisions about certain aspects of the delivery of support work, which is why the N D I S funds additional support. Because that's the human factor. You you you're looking, you're looking at the human factor. And so what I'm saying is that when you are dealing with the human factor, there are additional risks that you need to factor in.
Alright, I'll close it up by saying, so are you suggesting that in that environment you just described that it's inherent that it would be high risk of providing support to disabled people?
If you do appropriate risk treatment plans, if you understand the risk, if you understand what, you know, when you go out, otherwise you would leave people sitting in front of a television all day, that's not appropriate. So you need to understand implicitly the risk of what you were doing and then manage that appropriately and that's that's the human element that I'm talking about here.
Thank you, thank you both.
No questions.
Miss Eastman took you through in some detail the managing unreasonable complaint conduct procedure. Can I suggest to you a fundamental problem that is consistent with, I think, the questions Miss Eastman was asking you? One of the um examples of unreasonable lack of cooperation, which appears on page three, is refusing to follow or accept civic instructions, suggestions or advice without a clear or justifiable reason for doing so. Now, when you look at page two, which talks about the responsibilities of staff in the second paragraph, staff are responsible for explaining the contents of this procedure to all complainants, particularly to those who engage in unreasonable complaint conduct. It's the staff under this policy who are going to determine whether someone is providing a clear or justifiable reason for not for not acceding to a suggestion or advice. And the person who may not be acceding to a suggestion or advice, as you said, was someone who may be non-verbal. How on earth can this be an appropriate policy for an organisation providing services to people with high support needs, including those who are non-verbal?
Because we've never used this for clients.
I don't think that's an answer.
I understand.
How do you know what your staff are doing?
Because we've trained them appropriately.
Alright, thank you. Yes, thank you very much to both of you for participating in the panel. Uh Miss Eastman, when should we resume?
Uh if we could come back maybe at two P M?
Yes. The tentative suggestion is two o'clock, so we'll.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Dalseth, I think uh there may be another appearance, is there to be announced?
Yes, online.
Online?
If it please, the commission. Hi, if it please the commission, this is Callan. My name is Callan I P. On behalf of Miss Rob of Life Without Barriers with your lead. Uh junior is Miss Ellicott.
Yes, thank you very much, uh Miss Callan. Yes, Miss Dalseth.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. The next witness this afternoon will be Miss Rob, who is returning to the Royal Commission to speak to answer some questions about life without barriers arising from public hearing twenty. Before I introduce Miss Rob and proceed to the questions, I'll give an overview of public hearing twenty. But I think before that, we need to uh have Miss Rob take the oath of affirmation.
Yes, thank you, Miss Rob, for coming back to the Royal Commission to give evidence. Uh if you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, who sits as s- who is seated opposite you, she will administer the affirmation.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Miss Robbs. I'll now ask Miss Dalseth to ask you some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Public Hearing Twenty was held in Sydney from the seventh to the fourteenth of December twenty twenty one. It examined the experiences of two groups of people living in dis- people with disability living in supported accommodation. One group lived in two houses in northern New South Wales. These were referred to as the Gunalaba House and the Lismore House and collectively the Lismore Houses in the hearing. The second group. The second group lived in one house in Melbourne, referred to as the Melbourne House in the hearing. The accommodation and support services in each house was provided by a non-government disability services provider. Life Without Borders, Life Without Barriers, my apology, and I'll refer to them as L W B. The hearing focused on the experiences of Sophie and Natalie in the Lismore Houses. And Robert and Rebecca in the Melbourne House. The residents and their families were referred to by pseudonyms by direction of this Royal Commission. The case studies raised common issues, including allegations and proven incidences of violence, abuse, neglect. And exploitation experienced by the residents at the hands of staff, other residents, and people outside the houses. The adequacy of the measures L W B took to prevent such violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation. And the adequacy of L W B's responses to the allegations of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation. Following the hearing, written submissions were provided. Relevently, council assisting submissions were provided on the twenty fifth of March twenty twenty two. And L W B submissions were provided on the thirteenth of April twenty twenty two. On the twenty fourth of January twenty twenty three, a draft hearing report was provided to L W B. That hearing report has not yet been published, but L W B has had an opportunity to examine it. In this afternoon's evidence, I will focus on addressing recommendations from that draft report. I will do so by reference to the numbers in the report, but noting where relevant their numbers. From the submissions. So turning to you now, Ms Robb. You were the CEO, you have been the CEO of L W B since two thousand and eleven?
Yes.
And you gave evidence at public hearing twenty?
Yes.
Now, I want to ask you if there have been any changes to the board or the senior leadership team in the period since public hearing twenty? We know from records on your website and ASIC search, four directors have ceased. And two new directors have been appointed, uh ceased to be directors, yes, Chair.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Uh, so, so four have ceased to be directors and two new directors have been appointed. Have there been any changes in the senior leadership team?
Um, since the, I'm hearing twenty, there have been changes in the um executive team that report directly to me. Um, we have recently recruited to a new executive responsible for our disability services nationally. And we've also made some changes um in our back office, so our finance and our H R and our I C T. And we have a new executive um starting there in April. And we've also recruited um a new position to lead our um Access Inclusion Employment Plan, and that person reports directly to me. And another senior role that leads our reconciliation action plan, and they report directly to me as well. I think they're the main changes um at the executive level.
So those are all new people stepping into existing roles, or are some of them also new roles?
Um, no, some of them are new roles. The Accessibility Employment Inclusion Plan is a new leadership role. Um, we launched a new reconciliation action plan middle of last year, that's a new um leadership role. And the corporate role is, um, we had previously had um an executive responsible for the different corporate functions, so. I C T, finance, and we've really amalgamated that all into one executive role. The disability executive role, we have a person acting in that role. Um, uh, has been acting in that role uh around just over a year, maybe eighteen months, sorry. So it's same role, but it's a new permanent appointee.
And are any of the current members of L W B's board people living with a disability?
Yes, one of the new members that we recruited of the two that you mentioned. One of the new members um has a lived experience of disability. And we're also recruiting two further board members at the moment. And are specifically looking for another person with lived experience of disability in that recruitment as well.
What was the reason for the four directors ceasing to be directors? Was it the expiration of their terms or did they resign?
So, um, two different reasons, two of the directors was the um terms. As a result of us introducing that in two thousand and fifteen, so their terms ran out. And two of the directors both left to other opportunities um in the disability sector.
And at the senior leadership level, are any of those people in the senior leadership team, people with disability?
Um, yes, I have one person um with a disability that reports directly to me.
Turning then to the the draft report and the recommendations, I want to begin with recommendation one, which was that L W B. Should review its policies and procedures and its training to better equip staff in supporting L W B's clients. To enjoy intimate relationships and do so with amendments being co-designed by clients. The policies and procedures include, but are not limited to, L W B's disability services. Principles, care and support environments procedure, disability policy and procedure manual. New South Wales Health and Wellbeing Procedures and their more recent iterations. Now, in its submission following public hearing twenty. L W B undertook to amend its policies and procedures. To ensure they contain concrete advice that a person with disability. Should be permitted to have their intimate partners stay overnight. And to ensure that the rights of L W B's clients to have intimate relationships are prioritised. And there was going to be some training to staff and some supplemental individual training. In its response to a notice to give information to the Royal Commission, and that response was dated to September twenty twenty two. Two things were described, firstly, a a scoping of work and a proposal to undertake a review of policies. And the development of a client right statement. Firstly, to the policies. Is it the case that there is still no policy which contains that concrete statement? That L W B undertook to amend in its written submissions?
Um, the, it it is the case that the policy is still in development and and we, at this stage, we don't think that will be finalised. Um, until the middle of this year. And um and I appreciate that that is slower than we had hoped and intended and informed the commission of such, and I apologize for that. We are, we have ensured that we do have clients involved in the development and the finalisation of the policy. And staff as well, and um it has taken us a little longer than hoped. To get the um external expertise that we really require, required, to make sure that we're able to get some of those. In particular directions or advice that you've referenced to, um, as correct as we can be, um, for our staff.
What practical steps is L W B taking in the meantime while it, while it's going through this work? What are you doing right now, or what have you done to address this issue?
Yeah, look, it was, they're really serious issues, um, particularly with regards obviously to the case study. That was in the hearing twenty, extremely serious. And so whilst we are doing the policy work, we have in the meantime, um, engaged external expertise that I've spoken to. Um, and made sure that we have delivered training through to our disability support workers on the ground. And also specific and more targeted training to our frontline leaders, that we would call our disability service leaders. Um, so that the frontline leaders have got more um targeted support. And we did, um, because of the um particular learnings from the case study from this commission. We did use that as an unidentified case study in the training with the frontline, um, disability support workers, the direct support workers. And our frontline leaders as well, and then from that we developed some F E Qs and some other guidance. And we have some particular resources that our um practice quality teams, our Centre for Practice Excellence. Which is one of the improvements since the hearing um twenty. Um, they have, they provide particular support then if um situations arise, even though people are trained. If situations arise where they need particular um practice support around intimate relationships and the other topics identified in that recommendation.
And what is L W B doing to communicate to its clients? That L W B understands the client's rights to have these intimate relationships and that they will be prioritised?
So, um, my understanding is that, um, uh, again, communication with clients and families. Was one of our key learnings from hearing twenty. And it was very obvious from the case studies that we, um, as an organisation, but our staff didn't really. Feel equipped or supported or skilled perhaps to have some of those conversations and understand the expectations around communicating. With clients or families, so we absolutely recognise that that was, um, that was an improvement, so we have been working.
Yes, so you've spoken, excuse me for interrupting, but you've spoken about the training to staff. My question now is, what are you doing with clients, for clients, communicating to clients?
So, um, so the client right statement, and that's why I think in our response in September, we refer to the client right statement. So we've used the um, the implementation, yes, of the um client right statement as the opportunity. To be able to um have conversations with our clients across the organisation about their rights generally. As you'll see in the client right statement, and included in that is is the um intimate relationships piece as well.
Commissioners, you have a copy of that client rights statement in bundle I at tab two. Just to confirm, Ms Robb, you you said that this is, this document is general, it doesn't deal with the specific issue of intimate relationships?
Um, yeah, I accept that, um, absolutely, um, sorry, I should have been clearer that what we have used in the absence of the material that. Um, the group are developing at that policy level, we don't want to wait for that until we start having conversations. And so we chose to use the client right statement discussions as an opportunity to at least start those conversations with our clients. And our direct staff as well.
What's happened to the uh relationships rules that were the subject of evidence uh at the public hearing?
Um, so the relationship rules um that were in the case study. Um, would not be a practice that we would be encouraging or wanting to be repeated at all. Um.
That's not what I asked, what's happened to the rules themselves?
The, the doc, the document that's specific to that particular case study?
Yeah, the rules, the rela- the ru- relationship rules that are the subject of a finding in the document you have. But that finding was accepted in advance by L W B submissions in April two thousand twenty two. They were the rules that did not sufficiently respect Sophie's dignity of risk and privacy, didn't sufficiently support her right to intimacy. Had the real pretension, potential of creating unsafe situations for So- Sophie. That undermined her sense of having a real home. That was a finding that was accepted in advance, as it were. What's happened to the rules? Are they still somewhere? Have they been withdrawn? Uh, what's happened?
So my understanding is that the rules were specific to Sophie. Sophie is no longer with Life Without Barriers. And um it's not, uh, the rules were in a document that was, um, uh, a general document. That eh as a guidance for staff, they were specifically drawn up um for Sophie's, um, in Sophie's case.
So what has replaced it, if anything, for other residents?
Um, so, um, whilst we're doing the policy work, the the guidance that staff have. Is through the he, the um heart and healing training that we conducted with staff, the F E Qs that we've developed as a result of that. And the um other practice advice and tools that we give to frontline leaders. Um, as I mentioned before, to um council.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Moving on to recommendation two. It says, L W B should review its personal care policies to provide clear guidance to staff. In respect of how rostering decisions should be made to accommodate personal preferences. And how staff should respond if rostering decisions cannot accommodate personal care preferences. In its submissions, L W B accepted that it should review its personal care pro- policies to provide that clear guidance. And then in its response to the N T G. L W B said that it was working with its Centre for Practice Excellence. To ensure clear guidance is provided about the steps to be taken when shift cancellation occur on short notice. There was an estimated time of completion for that of the thirty first of October last year. And quote, where possible, close quote, staff should document the reasons why a client's personal preference. Could not be adhered to. So firstly, I just want to check what guidance was given about the steps to be taken for late shift cancellation. So what was the, what guidance was provided? What are the steps?
Um, so, um, the update with regards to that since we last provided is that the policies and procedures have been. And completely reviewed and encompassed all of the points um that we reflected on from the hearing twenty, from the commission. And we have really clear guidance now around um what a disability support worker. And then the disability um service leader needs to do in the instance, both firstly to proactively make sure that we understand people's. Needs and wants in regards to staff members supporting them, obviously with the um specific. Um, strong reminder for all of us of the seriousness of of the impact of that in the case study that was in hearing twenty. So making really clear that we have a good process to ask people to document that. And then a good process in the instance that that is not able to be met, be that in a reactive matter because someone doesn't come on shift. As a cancellation or or other something else that might happen in the roster. And a very clear protocol around the expectation both of um where the disability service leader goes for advice in those instances.
So is all of this in a document?
Sorry, yes, it is, sorry.
Where, do we have that document?
No.
Sorry, um, yes, oh, we'll absolutely provide that document, I apologize. We abs- can provide that document, sorry.
You haven't.
No, they, we don't have that.
So what's the document called?
Um, sorry, I, I, it will have a specific title, um, but um it will be around, um. The personal choice around personal care, um, I don't, I just think we've been asked for that, but absolutely happy to provide all of that material. If I could just add perhaps one more to your question, oh, yeah.
My question was what are the steps, and now I understand if you don't know what they are, but do you know? What, what, what happens when there's a shift cancellation that means a personal preference cannot be accommodated?
Yep, so in that instance, the instruction is then that if the disability service coordinator needs to be contacted, if they're not in the house, if they're aware. Then they need to contact the family member or the guardian or the appropriate person um for that um client. Explain the situation, explain why, and then see if there's able to be an outcome negotiated. For example, um, some people, and there's um examples provided to guide people on how to have that discussion. Sorry, so for example, someone might decide that actually, oh, well, they'll wait till the morning for a particular personal care, perhaps. Um, or sometimes a family member may choose, well, actually they'll come home for a shower or, you know, a number of negotiated outcomes. So that most importantly, particularly referencing back to the learnings from the case study. And we're not in a situation where we're not able to provide, for example, a female worker if that has been requested.
Now, a- as I emphasised when reading what the N T G response said, it says where possible, the the reasons will be documented. Why would it not be possible to document the reasons?
Sorry, I'm, yes, I take your point on that completely, actually, um, and I'm happy to provide a response on that when we provide the documents. I I don't know why it says where possible documents, um, sorry.
And what are the reasons for documentation, documenting the, that that reason, what, why the personal preference can't be met? What happens to the document?
Yeah, um, so the reason is also so that we can make sure that that's then in a discussion. Around the rostering for the house generally, so that we want to know. Um, that if someone's expressed a particular, um, you know, um, worker or something around personal care. Um, if there's an instance where that's not been able to meet, then that needs to be discussion with the staff, with the um service leader. Um, and and then escalated through to their manager as well, because of the importance of that, which, um. Was um crystal clear from the case study and the hearing.
And you said it gets escalated to the manager, does it go further than that? Does it come to you or? Does it come to you or to the board? Are any trends on not being able to meet personal preferences?
Um at the moment, that doesn't happen. And the main reason for that is because the next step that, and we have not done this yet, we are working on it, is to have that automated in our system so that we um so that we then we actually can get the trained data and also that flag is then provided up through the organisation. We have not been able to do that in the timeframe. We've done what we have, but that is the intention with the next step.
Moving on to recommendation four. Recommendation four is L W B should amend the vacancy management policy, and I'll skip over the the name of the policy, to make clear that consultation of existing clients and their families must occur before any decision is made to accept a new resident into a group home. Now, in its submissions, L W B accepted that it should amend its vacancy management policy to make that clear. In its N T G response, you described some steps that were being taken, including the trial of a new approach to vacancy management in order to receive feedback from existing and prospective residents, their families or authorised decision makers, client services and landlords to further in to identify further opportunities for improvement in that policy.
Which page you're referring to, Mestels? Which page?
Of the N T G response?
Yes.
Just a moment, Chair, I'm talking from my notes, so I'll turn that up for you.
All right, well, just leave it for the moment, even let us know. That's all right, go ahead.
So my my question is, did the trial in fact occur? And what, if any, refinement happened to the vacancy management policy?
Yes, so the vacancy management policy has been completely reviewed and that is finalised and does include all of the recommended points from hearing twenty in that. And again, I don't think we have been asked to provide that, but happy to do so if that's helpful to the commission. And with regards to the pilot, the pilot was completed and we did get good feedback in regards to um process, particularly, for example, around how the family members would like to be um communicated with and the fact that they wanted some of the um decisions to be able to ma- be made at a house meeting and also who needed to be attending those meetings as well. So we factored those um that feedback from the pilot into the finalised um policy and procedure, which is in place today. And we've implemented that policy across the organisation and we monitor at a national level um the process around vacancies and um the um to make sure the policy's implemented.
Didn't provide these revised documents with your response?
Um well, the, sorry, the um the documents that we're talking about have been completed since our last um in September, sorry, yep.
Chair, my thanks to my instructors. The recommendation that I was speaking to recommend is the on the first page of the N T G response. So it's recommendation four in the hearing report, but recommendation three in the N T G response.
Thank you.
The vacancy management procedure that is outlined in the N T G response refers to a process for um consideration to be given, significant consideration to be given to issues raised by residents and their families. And then the 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 placement of somebody into that group home doesn't proceed until the issues have been, issues raised have been addressed. Who decides when the issue has been addressed?
Yeah, so um in the um policy that we have, um we have clearly said that we really want it to be unanimous um decision. So we um work really hard. Um our um local leaders, as I referred to before, responsible for the houses, um try to do that with the um team effectively, be that the clients, family members, you know, um decision makers. And we do want to try to achieve a unanimous um outcome of the fact that it's a good, it's a good step for everyone. And we do have in the policy that if that's not possible, then we will go with a majority if there is perhaps one issue that's not resolved. And and again, I'll share the information so my wording's correct. Um but then there is a conversation that needs to be had between that person and their line manager and the um practice team as well. If if unanimous unanimous decision's not able to be um reached, um because we we really want to try to to do that as much as possible. And for a unanimous decision to be reached, I assume therefore that the um various issues would have been addressed.
And if you're not able to reach a unanimous decision, if you go with majority, does L W B then have a policy to work with the minority, the the person who didn't agree, to help them explore other living arrangements? Or are they then just in the house in the majori- in the minority?
Yeah, um so i- if it was um a client or family that expressed the the view, um everyone that um is with Life Without Barriers is always um absolutely um free and encouraged to consider whether they want to keep staying where they are. I think um what we'd want to be happening is if there was a a serious issue, you wouldn't be you wouldn't be going with the majority view. If it was more something that could be accommodated in the house, then we'd be wanting steps to be put in place to try to make that um as manageable as possible for everyone. And absolutely, everyone has that choice if people then decide that that's not the home they want to be living in, of course. And we would do everything we can to um uh to support them. We not want that outcome, but we would do everything that we can to support them.
My next question isn't, doesn't flow directly from a recommendation in the final report, but rather from L W B's submissions. And it's on the the topic of um the board reporting practice and govern- government governance framework. Uh Chair, for your information, this is pa- pages twenty-six and twenty-seven of L W B's submissions. In its submissions, L W B said that on reflection, in I I'm paraphrasing, not quoting, including consideration of the evidence given and the issues raised in public hearing twenty, L W B intended to commission expert advice with respect to reporting significant incidents to the board to assist the board to discharge its responsibilities. And then you've provided some information about who's been condish- commissioned to help with that work. And then in the N T G response, you spoke about the independent consultants who had undertaken a review of the framework and provided some recommendations. And a new practice governance framework was approved by the board in August twenty twenty-two, and it was to commence in September twenty twenty-two, with full organisational commencement set to commence in twenty twenty-three. So against all that background, have the recommendations been received and implemented?
Um yes, they have. And um in regards to the um practice governance framework that has been implemented and in the development of that, the findings, um the draft findings and probably at that time um from this commission were um specifically taken into consideration in regards to the board reporting specifically around um the types of incidents that were um raised in um hearing twenty as well.
Now, L W B has provided to the Royal Commission and Commissioners, this is in bundle I behind tab three, its reportable incidents responding to allegations and incidents of sexual violence procedure.
Mm-hmm.
This this new procedure doesn't include any information about those kinds of incidents and allegations being reported to the board. Is there something specific in that new board reporting framework that you've just discussed that deals specifically with allegations and incidents of sexual violence?
Um no, you're right, that document doesn't um compass um the organisational reporting. Um I'm thinking about the framework and um I don't know if it specifically calls that out. However, um we do have uh other, whether it's in the framework document or other related documents that guide the reporting specifically for the board that have been updated as part of the practice governance framework review that you commented on. And I'm happy to provide those to the commission too. And they do um uh articulate um the how the the reporting to the board and the internal reporting around um the matters in the policy.
And does that?
Procedure, sorry, the procedure, sorry.
Does does that additional documentation that you've just referred to, does it specifically address the incidents of the kind that were dealt with in the case study in public hearing twenty? So it's sexual violence, um your evidence at the time. So in public hearing twenty, your evidence was to the effect that you didn't think those allegations needed to be reported to the board. I suppose firstly, do do you maintain that view?
So, no.
And so is there now guidance that would ensure that anyone coming into your role, anyone below you, would understand the obligation to report those kinds of things?
So um to be very clear, we um I have reflected um a a lot and um on reviewed the material and um rewatched um that that part of, well, the entire hearing um last time and particularly that piece. And and in the review of the practice governance framework, um I absolutely do agree that the board absolutely need to understand um the matters occurring in the organisation, particularly matters of serious impact, like the ones in the case study. And as I sit here, I'm obviously struggling to give you the specific name of the document, so my apologies for that. But I can certainly um assure the commission that that um finding and the um questioning from the commission in hearing twenties was taken into consideration and um and now reflected in the in the board reporting.
Um moving on to recommendation five, and so this was L W B should promptly take action to date all current policies and date all future policies and make all policies readily available to residents, their families and any staff who may be affected by the policy. Now, in the submissions, L W B undertook to do that. And then in its N T G response, there was an estimated date of completion for the dating of policies, thirty September twenty twenty-two. I take it that's been done?
That has been done, yes.
And then making all policies available to residents, families and staff, estimated date of completion thirty-one October twenty twenty-two, that's been done?
Um all policies are not yet available. Being we are, um the policies are going onto the website and um we're uploading them in tranches, for want of a better language. And we um and 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 prioritising the ones that need to be up there. We we are also working to try to make sure that those policies are simpler. One of the reflections from hearing twenty was that some of our documentation was too complex for people to be able to follow. So at the same time as uploading, we are trying to make sure that we simplify those documents. And we have also, um in the meantime, whilst all of the documents are not up on the website and we understand the importance of people having, absolutely having access to them, families and and clients, sorry. And we we have the um ca- eh capacity for people to then request specific policies, which I think was another um if I um point made by the commission as well. And and we'll keep that even though they'll be published.
What you're saying just for the moment? What's been the problem about uploading?
Um it's not really so much a a problem as such, it's more that we have um probably thousands of policies and um we want to do it in a way that's really help-
Thousands of policies?
Sorry?
Thousands of policies?
Um well, I I oh, a lot.
A lot.
I would say a lot of policies. Some of those are much more relevant to um clients and families than some others might be. And so we're doing it in a priority order and we also want to do it in a way where it's-
Let me put the question another way. Have all policies relevant to clients, residents and their families and any staff who may be affected by the policies, have those policies been uploaded, all of them?
So all staff have access to all policies?
My question, I think it was tolerably clear, have all the policies that are relevant to residents, their families and any staff who may be affected, have they all been uploaded?
No.
Why not?
Um uh I guess the process that I'm um trying to explain about making sure that the priority policies are uploaded that are most relevant to clients and families, staff access the policies via the internet. And not the, they might access them on the website too, but they do have full access to all policies on the website. And so it's the clients and families, ones that we are um still uploading. And I I I appreciate that that-
Does this suggest that uh Life Without Barriers hasn't given this uh process of providing information to residents and their families the priority that uh is envisaged in the acceptance by L W B of the proposed recommendation that became recommendation five?
I would most certainly hope that that was not the impression that we were giving at all. It's certainly not the intent at all. I do appreciate that it is a lot, it's taking us longer than we had previously intended and I do apologize for that. But it's certainly um not a sign that we're not absolutely committed and and appreciate the importance of the recommendation as well.
Yes, Mestels?
Uh thank you. Still on that that policy question, is the process being delayed because L W B is reviewing and revising policies along the way and then uploading the new ones, rather than taking the existing policies that are relevant to clients and their families and uploading what you've got now and then doing your review?
Um I I I understand. Um I think the that that is contributing to some of the policies and the others will um just be around that um technical capability for us. Um there's no, it's not as though we are um trying to um, you know, and review them all before we upload, sorry, yep.
Uh turning then to the the final recommendation, which is recommendation six, L W B should consider making an ex gratia payment to Natalie as compensation for the conduct of L W B worker three. In its submission, um L W B said, sorry, lost my place in my notes. So uh L W B spoke firstly of um apologies and it said that it the board did not make an apology to Natalie when L W B became aware of what had happened to her and it should have. Um you you referred to L W B's active apology policy and noted that you didn't take that action and but you had given an apology then. You also acknowledged the circumstances where the investigations by L W B resulted in findings that two staff members had played a part in allowing the assault to occur and by that, L W B had committed a serious breach of duty. So that's the the submissions. And then in the um in N T G response, you provided some detail about what had happened in the meantime about the ex gratia payment. So in June twenty twenty-two, L W B approached the Royal Commission to request contact details for Natalie and her mother to to broach the subject of an ex gratia payment. And then in late July, the Royal Commission advised that it didn't have those contact details. In September twenty twenty-two, L W B sent a letter using the contact details that it had. Can you provide the commissioners with an update, what happened after September?
And so September, we did um send a um letter um uh to action the recommendation from the um the co- the commission and the hearing. Um and then in the um uh past few weeks, um proceedings have been commenced on behalf of Natalie.
Okay.
For, sorry.
I don't want to get into the proceedings, but you you've said that's the last few weeks. So between September, when you sent off the letter, and the last few weeks, there was no action? Is is that accurate to understand?
Yes, that is, yeah.
Did did Life Without Barriers make an offer of an ex gratia payment at any stage?
Um in the letter, we made apology and we um-
No, no, my my, I didn't ask about an apology, I said- I didn't ask about an apology, I said, did Life Without Barriers at any stage offer to make an ex gratia payment? I'm not worried about whether it was accepted or not, was an offer made?
Um the the offer was made, but not um a specific amount, if that's, I'm sorry, if that's where you're.
And that's not an offer, at least as lawyers would understand the term, all right, take it.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Ms Robb, those are my questions, but the commissioners may have more for you.
Sorry, Ms Robbs, I take it that you read very carefully. The submissions made on behalf of L W B in response to council assisting submissions.
Yes.
You have also received the report that was referred to, that's been prepared by commissioners, but not yet generally published.
Yes.
You appreciate, I take it, that the report for the public hearing that you have received. Makes thirty two factual findings adverse to L W B.
Yes.
You also appreciate, I take it, that twenty of those, uh nineteen of those findings. Were foreshadowed in council assisting submissions and were accepted by L W B.
Yes.
And another one was not disputed, making twenty in all. The first of six findings of the thirty two. Were partially accepted by L W B to a great extent or lesser extent.
Yes.
If we limit ourselves to those findings that were accepted or partially accepted. Do you now, having reflected on the matter, accept that these constituted very serious institutional failings by L W B?
The first thing is that we um, I appreciate that we may have made statements around the findings at that point. But now that we have the um final draft, final report, we um accept the findings of the commission. And all of the findings of the commission.
My question was, having reflected on the matter, do you accept? That the matters accepted by L W B in its submissions. Amounted to very serious institutional failings by L W B over a period of time?
Um I understand that there's a um finding specifically around that too. And I feel like I we I've tried really hard to express. The um the accept, the accountability that um we've accepted for the failings. And most importantly, the impact to the people involved in the case studies, um I've I.
I'll ask the question again, because I don't think you're answering it.
Okay.
Given that L W B accepted. Twenty of the findings that have been contained in the report that you have received, they accepted those in advance. And they partially accepted another six others, taking those, do they not indicate to you now? As you sit there, that there were very serious institutional failings by L W B. Over a period of time towards its clients?
Um, I. I understand that um what you want me to say is yes, and.
I want you to give an honest answer.
Yeah, and I think what I do, what I do, what in reviewing the hearings and. I'm reading all of the reports and recommendations and particularly hearing the um experiences from the clients and families involved. I absolutely accept that the um, the experience of those people was nothing like we want them to experience at Life Without Barriers. I accept and um.
I feel you're good enough to answer my question.
I well, I'm I'm trying very hard to answer your question.
Difficult, um Ms Robbs?
Yeah, I think um I am trying very hard to answer the question, I think the the view that um we would take. Is that in those instances, there is no doubt that some of the processes. And the um checks and balances and capabilities that we'd want to have in place to keep people safe. And to provide people with the care and support that we want them to have, did not do the job that we designed them to do, there is absolutely no doubt of that. And um we've been really clear on that the whole way along, and that's why we do accept all of the findings. The the reason that we, I, have um resisted slightly. The suggestion or um um finding that that then speaks to um. Uh broad systemic feelings, and I'm trying to use the, can't remember the exact language, sorry, and we've used. Um is because I think that it's not representative of everything across the organisation. Um in that way, but 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 that being said. Um in the reflections on this, I do understand and accept that the things that we've done. To improve things and to make a difference have been done at a system level. Um and that that's the piece that I feel I wasn't perhaps able to clearly articulate in in hearing twenty. Um that I accept that the processes and cap- training capability and the reporting. I absolutely accept that that did not work in those instances, and we've worked really hard to improve that and to learn. But the um the piece that I am slightly resisting is then the suggestion. That that is then attributable to all of Life Without Barriers across all of its time. Um and that's the piece, sorry.
I'm not sure that was implicit in the question I asked you, but thank you, I understand your answer. Uh I think you said, unless I've mistaken you, that having had the opportunity to read the draft report that's been submitted. That you now accept all the findings in that report?
We, if I can comment on that, um we, I do accept the findings, we do accept the findings. And and the reason that we we do that is because um the commission has had all the evidence. And we have had the opportunity to express our views in multiple avenues. And you have your final findings and we recet- respect and accept those those findings. As a result of the commission's process.
One of those findings is finding thirty two, Ms Robbs is Chief Executive Officer of L W B. And L W B more generally did not take an active approach to monitoring, detecting and rectifying deficiencies in the operations of L W B. But rather responded to revelations about deficiencies as they occurred. I take it from your answer that you and L W B accept that finding?
Um again, on re- reviewing all the material and particularly in watching the hearing and the experiences. Um they're absolutely accept that in those instances, this I and the organisation. Were not proactive enough, and if we had been and those same instances were to occur now. Um I'm really confident there would be a different, a different response.
Just putting to one side for the moment, a different response. Has anybody been held accountable for what you accept? Have been failings that you yourself have uh just confirmed? Has anybody held, been held accountable by L W B, the board or anybody else for those failings?
So I feel I'm being held highly accountable by the board. And the way that I, the conversations that we've been having and the way that we have been regularly reporting the improvements. And being held accountable to those improvements by the board quite properly, I feel a high level of accountability to the commission. To, as we've just gone through, to report back on the um recommendations and the improvements that we've made. And I feel a particular accountability to the clients and families involved, which is why we have both um endeavoured to make the apologies. But also, um importantly, um being motivated, more motivated than ever. Um on hearing their statements and their experiences, um to make the improvements that we're working really hard to make. So I I feel like I'm highly accountable and I um and we discussed that at the board. And I appreciate, and I know, speak on behalf of the board, but in the discussions, we're very clear that we're accountable, most importantly. To the clients and families involved and the broader clients and families and staff um across Life Without Barriers, we are in no doubt of that at all.
Take it from your answer that nobody below staff level, but at senior levels of uh L W B. Has either been dismissed or suffered, experienced any disciplinary action as a result of the matters investigated and reported on at P H twenty?
We have not dismissed anyone as a regard, a re- a result of that, senior level, no.
And as far as you're aware, the board has not issued any public statement. Acknowledging responsibility of L W B for these failings or hazards?
We 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 do have a public statement and we are intending, we're intending to publish that with the final report. Um and we have a um eh eh publicly, but also a particular communication with our. Um clients, families and staff and stakeholders, we we were waiting for the final report for that, that statement.
Uh but there's nothing up to date?
Eh publicly, um I n- not from the board, I don't think so. Sorry, I would just need to take that, I there there will, I think, we have made statements, but I don't think the board have made a public statement, certainly not of the form. That we intend to make when we have the final report at all.
All right, thank you, I'll ask Commissioner Bennett whether she has any further questions.
Mine are of the more mundane nature, um I'd like to. When you said there's thousands of policies.
Yeah.
Um but the the questions still go, um. Process that you're going through to review the policies, you have a working group, is that right? That's what I read.
Um the the possibly, certainly the the review of the intimate relationships piece has an extensive working group, but.
Twenty, page twenty nine, I think.
Sorry, yeah.
And your response, is it twenty nine? It says that the, this is particularly about uh the the recommendation about reviewing the policies that families and clients would be able to see.
Yes, sorry.
And there were fifty policies that are listed in here. So is the process, it says you had a working group look at the policies, now is that an internal working group of staff or experts or people with disability?
Um I I I think that will be staff, however, I would take a note that often. And particularly with the client rights statement, for example, we do um consult with our disability, National Disability Advisory Group. But I can't um assure you that that happened in that working group.
Is your National Disability Advisory Group resident?
Sorry, yes, it is, sorry, yes, it is, my apologies.
So you you, these policies that affect. Uh people living or receiving services, you have a mechanism for consulting with those clients?
Um.
On policies that affect them?
I, very honestly, I I'm not sure that mechanis- I don't think that mechanism's as strong as it needs to be. And a lot of that reflection has come from listening to this hearing actually over the week. And we do have a National Disability Advisory Council, it is made up of clients of Life Without Barriers, it's chaired by a client. Absolutely, we consult them on key policies and key practices and changes. But one of the reflections that came from listening to this hearing is that um I we. Will definitely be able to strengthen the involvement of our clients in in the policy process.
About the ways that they might live and how they might have information?
Yeah, absolutely.
But it's been uh more than a year since this hearing and the policies. Those fifty core ones that have been identified in your response have still not been all completed.
Um.
And not uploaded so that they are available for family and residents to access, is that right?
Um I'm not sure if the full fifty are definitely up there, but there are definitely um. It will be clo- eh there will be policies up there, but I cannot say that it'll be the full fifty, sorry.
Has the board shown an interest in monitoring the progress of the recommendations and the findings of the Royal Commission? And ask you regularly at every board meeting, uh how they're progressing, why there are delays? Um what they look like, those change policies?
Absolutely, so the we report to the risk committee, practice governance committee and then into the board every quarter. On all of the recommendations and other improvements that we've identified from our experience through the hearing. Um as I've reflected, we report all of that to the board quarterly, um including the status of things and any material. Um reflections or changes um that we have in in that.
Have they expressed concern about how long this is taking?
Um I the the board, eh we're all concerned, I'm not, certainly not sitting here now. Saying that I wouldn't have wanted to meet the original deadline that we gave the commission and by any means. And I apologize, I've given you that impression at all, so we absolutely wanted to meet the deadline, we we haven't been able to do it. And I'm just being really honest, and we're we're working really hard and I absolutely understand the importance. And yes, the board are aware of the delay and yes, they have asked me to make sure that that's prioritised.
And the last question goes to the thousands of those policies, well, the many, obviously, there are many.
Sorry, my apologies, I shouldn't have used that language.
We've heard about staff um throughout this hearing, how much pressure's on them, how much admin is on them. Um how they, and we've heard in other hearings where it's, how are you ensuring that they have easy access? To understanding the policies, to finding them and to um ensuring that they understand them. And in their practical and sensible, common sense way of applying those many policies. That you have and are reviewing and changing, how are you doing that?
Um yeah, look, I've listened a lot to the evidence, um well, I've listened to the whole hearing and the evidence given on that from uh my. You know, fellow chief executives, um so the way that we are trying very hard to manage it, it is a challenge for everyone. Is that we have a specific place on the internet where the staff are able to access and the staff do all have access. Rather than just have all of the policies there, we've sort of, we've sectioned it up so that we can. Um eh make it easier, simpler for staff to be able to access the policies that are most relevant to their day to day. Some of the other policies around perhaps how we um just run the um security in the I C T system, if I just pick something. That's probably not as relevant, obviously, to a disability support worker as some of the other really important policies. So we've we've tried to simplify the language and the format and the policies to make them shorter. And that is an ongoing um process, but we're we are trying very hard to do that. We're making sure that it's easier for them to find it on the internet. And we'll um, you know, continue to try other technical um innovations, I guess. To make it easier for the staff members to get access to the information they need nice and quickly and in a really user friendly format.
Thank you.
You shouldn't make your own.
Uh thank you, thank you, Ms Robbs, for for your evidence. My question relates to leadership opportunities for disabled people. We heard this morning from Terry Simons, the C E O of Urala. Who told us that recently Urala has set up a C E O internship programme. Which give disabled people an opportunity to uh potentially become C E O. Do you have any comment or observations on that?
I I mean, I've spoken to Terry Simon, sorry, Mr Simons, at depth about that, I think that's a fantastic thing that they're doing. And I would absolutely love to be involved and I'm hoping that he can help make that happen. I did note that yesterday, I think yesterday in the panels, there was also questions around some of the really good A I C D opportunities for directors. People with a disability to become directors and also the disability um Leadership Institute work too. And we're certainly actively engaged in both of those initiatives. And I think that the um eh the work that Urala have been doing on that front, that they spoke about in the hearing earlier today. Um you know, I'm I'm very keen to be involved in that, and I know that our board members, existing and the board members that have left us. And we're really central to um working with the A I C D, particularly on their initiative and the um the institute as well.
So can we expect uh Life Without Barrier to in the next six to twelve months set up a similar thing?
That would be fantastic, and yes, absolutely.
You can, we can expect that.
I will say yes to that for sure, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, thank you, Ms Robbs, for coming to the Royal Commission to give. Thank you very much. Thank you, Miss Robbs, for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence today. We appreciate your assistance. Ms Dawson, what should we now do?
Chair, if we could take a five-minute adjournment for the customary reconstituting of the panel and then we'll proceed with the last panel of the afternoon.
Yes, we've taken just a little longer than was anticipated, but we shall take the five minutes and resume.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
Yes, Mrs.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I appreciate on a Thursday of a five-day hearing, starting a, a session after three PM is probably a big ask for everybody, but I'm very grateful that Miss Doyle, Miss Forsyth and Miss Fury have returned and remained during the day. We want to turn our attention now to, uh, one aspect of responding to complaints and that is not the internal process, but when the organisation turns externally. So that's the focus of the panel this afternoon. So the first topic I want to ask you about is, and I'll call it transparency and data in relation to complaints and incidents. So the broader issue is the extent to which, as an organisation, you report, or probably a better word is to say that you share the information that you learn from the complaints received over the course of the year with relevant stakeholders. So in the first instance, is there, uh, any steps taken by your organisations to inform people with disability to whom you provide services and their families about the numbers of complaints, the nature of the issues raised in the complaints and what the outcomes might be? Do you do that, Miss Forsyth for Northcott?
We currently don't do that on a, um, broad level. We, we clearly communicate to individual people in relation to their, um, individual issues, but we don't currently do that. And one of the things we're mindful of in considering how we should appropriately, um, share that type of information is that, uh, at times numbers of complaints or incidents reporting can sometimes serve as a, a disincentive around a culture of open reporting. So it's something that, um, we're very mindful of, uh, trying to work through.
Looking at the responses for Civic and for Cara, are we right in understanding that you don't make information of that kind available to the, uh, people who receive services or the family networks?
At Cara, um, we have just issued our 2022 annual review and in that we identify the number of incidents and complaints that were actively managed during that year. We have, um, um, that may, we'd like to improve on how we disclose and see great benefit in doing so, but at this stage we've just disclosed the number.
Right. And Miss Doyle?
So, um, like, um, Miss Forsyth, we disclose, um, the complaint and all the surrounding evidence around it back to the family, the client, et cetera, but not holistically, um, um, no, we don't.
One, uh, reason organisations generally don't like to tell people about their complaints and the nature of those complaints and the outcomes is that it creates a perception this might be an organisation with trouble or difficulty. But equally, if it's done in a, an appropriate way, it might also show the opposite, that this is an organisation that has a culture that is one committed to accountability and to encourage people to feel that they can make complaints and that those complaints will be acted on. Um, in the decisions that your organisations have made, in Cara's case to share information the way you've described, or for the other organisations not to publish that, has that tension between reputation and potential damage to reputation by publishing the fact of the complaints been a factor weighed against the transparency and accountability of doing so?
Uh, for, certainly for Northcott, it's not something that we've considered. Our main consideration in thinking about the information we share in response to complaints and, and incidents has really been about encouraging a culture of complaining, uh, and, uh, reporting, particularly with staff. Uh, and we absolutely acknowledge and see the tension around whether or not doing that publicly encourages, um, the people you support to do it, uh, but it's never been an issue of reputation when we've, um, thought through the issues.
All right. What about to the workers, so your own employees? Cara, I think the workers, that Cara, the workers can view a dashboard.
Correct.
And so workers can see through the internal processes, what the situation is at Cara in terms of the numbers of complaints, where the complaints might be coming from and the nature of those complaints, is that right?
Correct.
And in terms of, uh, the staff who can access that, is that from support worker up to interim CEO?
Yes, and, um, and yes, it is a comprehensive dashboard updated four times a day for incidents that are logged.
And Civic, uh, the approach you take is a general response that managers and leaders are responsible for ensuring their staff are provided with regular feedback about incident hazard and complaints events.
So have dashboards that, um, that talk to those incidents, yes.
So while I'm just looking at the response, I don't think you raised that, that you have a dashboard that employees can look at. So you, like Cara, you've got that.
We have dashboards that are, um, shared with the leadership team.
Uh, uh, but not to all employees?
And they're shared down in their talks, in their toolbox talks.
So it depends on the leaders telling the, uh, staff who they supervise?
Correct.
And it will be up to the leaders as to whether they share that and the nature of what they might share, is that right? And at Northcott, you don't generally make available data and trends about all complaints and incidents to workers, is that right?
We certainly don't make a, a dashboard available at a frontline worker level, um, but we do similarly have dashboard reporting through the system, through managers who are able to see information in relation, um, to complaints and incidents.
We've heard, uh, during the course of this week, some evidence about the situation of workers and the cultures in organisations that encourage workers to be the eyes. In effect, building a culture that the standard you walk past is the standard that you accept. To the extent that you want to build a culture where the workers feel confident to make, uh, complaints or raise incidents without any adverse consequences to them, do you think sharing the information about the complaints, the nature of the complaints and the way in which from a, a management perspective you're responding to it would be a helpful tool in building confidence in the disability workforce? Who wants to take that one?
Well, in my view, yes. So we, we proactively encourage reporting across the organisation. We run campaigns like See Something, Say Something with that catchy heading and some good examples underneath of where this is good for outcomes for our customers and, um, the organisation. So, um, so I think it is a, a positive, um, thing to do, to share more broadly. I am going to add to that is that if an incident is reported, um, by one colleague um, in relation to their fellow colleague, they are marked as confidential and is not transparent at all. Um, the, um, and the details of that incident too.
Right. So there's some protections against victimisation.
Correct.
And at Northcott, you don't share that information across the staff generally? I mean, how does that, um, how's that consistent with your philosophy of having, uh, a culture that's one that does report and that there's not a fear of reporting?
Yeah. Look, as I said, it is a, it's a, um, uh, an issue that's complex around competing, I guess, components of, um, how much to give that encourages reporting versus creates an environment whereby people, um, are fearful because it, it turns up as a, a KPI, for example. So what we've been trying to do is be mindful of how some of our KPI for managers can give, um, effect to the, um, outcome that we're seeking without, um, in, unintentionally serving as, um, creating a culture of silence. A good example might be around, um, manager KPI around complaints, may not be around a number of complaints and a reduction of, but actually about a responsiveness within the compliance timeframe within our policy. Uh, and we also similarly to Cara, run other campaigns to support our staff to, um, speak up about abuse. We also offer a safeguarding hotline, which is when people can call a member of our safeguarding team, um, and talk through a concern or query in, in a, in a really informal way to get a sense of, um, you, you know, whether, if and how they should report.
And, uh, do each of your organisations have whistleblower policies that reflect the Corporations Act requirements?
Yes.
And, uh, in terms of encouraging anyone to use those whistleblower protections and given the confidential nature of that, have you seen any particular impact of whistleblower, that whistleblower policy?
When we communicate and remind staff in relation to whistleblower policy, we often see people, uh, uh, I guess, an uptake in whistleblower, um, issues coming through, which is a, a good thing because it reminds people that it's an avenue with which they can, um, raise concerns.
Miss Doyle?
So our whistleblower, um, doesn't get utilised often and we do, we have easy reads, we have a lot of work, we've done a lot of work around getting that information out there. What we do have is, we say, if in doubt, shout it out, and then that can be about absolutely anything.
No, I'm just asking about the corporations.
No, that, that, that one doesn't not seem to get utilised much at all.
And Cara?
Um, sorry, what was the question?
So I'm just asking about the whistleblower requirements under the Corporations Act.
Yeah, so my experience with the organisation, of course, is limited. Um, um, we have a, a stop, we're, um, registered with Stop Line to ensure anonymity. Um, and my experience with that policy has been quite positive within the organisation.
Right. So the, all your organisations also have external reporting obligations as well as the internal complaint handling. Before I ask you about the processes with the NDIS Commission, can I ask you about engagement with local police, for example? Um, do each of your agencies have a particular arrangement with the local police in where you provide services as to the nature of reporting and any support required by police?
Um, my understanding is that we certainly have a policy in relation to how our support workers and when and how to report matters to the police, um, and express the, the, uh, the nature of those matters that must be reported immediately before reported internally. Um, but we also in practice, uh, do make contact with our local service to identify is this one that we should be, you know, if we need more details, just to clarify, is this one that should be reported immediately or is it, um?
So if in doubt, contact the police first? Uh, and is that because if, there's a risk that if there is an internal investigation commenced or action taken, that that might impair any steps taken by the police to investigate?
Yes.
Uh, have you got any arrangement with the police such that, assuming that sometimes police may not be familiar or have experience in working with victim survivors with disability? What arrangements are in place so that when the police do need to investigate and engage with someone for whom you provide services, what arrangements have you addressed?
Um, so in terms of general support, if for, um, so I guess you're contemplating a, an incident that warrants calling the police because it's so severe. Um, so I, you know, in my review of the policies, I haven't identified something specific um, in relation to how to support that investigation, um, but general support of the, um, our customer.
Let me, let me give you a hypothetical, uh, and it reflects a, an issue I raised yesterday. If, for example, the nature of the service is a group home, a number of people living together and if you assume that that is, uh, an environment that might be described as a family or domestic setting and an incident occurs in the house that might be characterised as family or domestic violence and the police are involved, that's obviously going to be the police coming into a situation where there may be questions of violence for people with disability as both perhaps perpetrator and also victim survivor. What arrangements do you have with police and if police need to come and intervene in a situation such as that, that police will know and understand this particular nature of the environment that they're coming into? That's, that's what I was getting at.
Yes. Um, and I haven't identified, doesn't mean that they don't exist, um, just in my short time I have not identified particular, um, arrangements with our local police force. Um, I would need to, I would like to take that on notice in fact and come back to you because we may well have.
For Northcott? Yeah, look, I can provide, um, some insight into our approach. Um, uh, we ensure that our safeguarding team is involved in any contact with the police first and foremost because they, um, have worked previously and continue to work closely with those police to ensure they understand the nature of the support needs of the people involved and ensure that they understand how they need to communicate, um, given the various ways that people we support communicate. Um, in addition to that, uh, in, in local areas, um, certainly our, our supported independent living homes do have local relationships with local police whereby, in addition to our centralised safeguarding team to facilitate that, uh, to be appropriate and safe for the person with a disability, that they have an ongoing relationship to understand the needs of those people, um, and kind of work collaboratively.
Miss Doyle, is there any arrangement in Civic?
Yes, so we have close relationships with the police force in, um, our areas and in particular we've had police come and do work experience at Civic and we have sat on discussion panels with the police force to enable them to understand some of the complexities that may arise in domestic situations. And, um, it's, it's been, um, a really good relationship.
So the other, uh, just stick with the scenario that I've used and think about the group home as the workplace for your support workers. And if, for example, there's an incident that occurs in their workplace that might give rise to a risk of health and safety and, uh, there may be a reporting obligation to the relevant WorkSafe or Safe Work Authority in the local jurisdiction, uh, have you got any arrangements in place in terms of inspectors from such agencies coming into the home? Does that come up at all for Northcott?
I, I don't, I'm not aware of particular arrangements in relation to that. Again, we, um, have a system whereby that's coordinated on, on our side to ensure it's as seamless and easy as possible for everyone. Um, but I'm not aware of, of a specific arrangement locally.
Anybody else?
Well, our procedure, I've just noted, um, requires in the event that there is a, a work health and safety matter that has arisen in one of our services, to, um, to contact Safe Work SA through our work health and safety manager.
Right. Now, some of the same incidents that I've just, uh, described, a domestic situation and a report to the police or work, or a work safe, uh, type arrangement might also give rise to a reportable incident to the NDIS Commission, is that right?
That's correct.
So, um, have you found that there are circumstances where there might be a number of regulators or a number of particular, uh, entities that reports need to be made to? And how do you, uh, take, what do you do when you might have a number of different entities or agencies to whom you have to report at Northcott? What's your approach?
Uh, yes, that, that does happen, um, and our approach, um, we certainly have an incident notification procedure to help provide some clarity of the expectations and requirements under the regulatory environments in each setting. Um, and we, uh, use our central teams to coordinate and ensure that that happens. So a, uh, incident will occur and people, uh, management will be notified. In addition to that, we have an online incident management system that sends automatic notifications of those nature of incidents to those internal teams. Now, that's not necessarily the only means by which they are notified, but it provides an additional layer, uh, of ensuring those central teams, be that safeguarding team for police, be that the work health safety team, are coordinated in, um, engaging and making sure we fulfil our requirements.
All right. So I want to come to the NDIS Commission and in, uh, Cara's response, you've said there's two internal teams responsible for investigations and Cara does consider whether matters are more appropriate to have an external investigator engaged. And in the previous three years has approached the NDIS Commission on two occasions to inquire about whether the commission. About whether the commission could conduct an external investigation. The commission has declined. And that's led to Cara appointing an external investigator. Uh in the form of former detectives of the South Australian Police. I wanted just to ask you about. What was your expectation with respect to the N D I S Commission? Coming in itself and conducting an investigation. Why did you take that step?
Um, I'm unable to answer that question. This is before my time. I'm aware of the circumstances.
Got the N T G there, so this is, yes, so it's bundle H tab one, page four to five.
It's two, three, five, isn't it? And, sorry, what page?
Uh, page four and it's paragraph nine. So it starts at the bottom of page four over to page five, paragraph nine.
There with me? My copy does not have a paragraph nine on page. Oh, yes, sorry, this is, it went back to the two internal teams responsible for investigations.
That's it, yes, that's the bit that I've just read. So I just asked about the circumstances of approaching the commission.
Why did you do that? So, um I I can only, um I have asked internally, um. That question just to uh prepare myself. And I am unclear. I don't know what triggered that. I can only um, you know, guess that it's required expert knowledge and. The commission might have been better prepared, but I I can't answer that one.
Okay. So in terms of the N D I S Commission, uh have you all read? Or had an opportunity to read the uh inquiry of a report, own motion inquiry into aspects of supportive accommodation?
Yes.
Yes.
And you will see that the commission uh in its report, page sixty six, makes. A number of observations arising from its examination of the reportable incidents. And uh the pro, it's recorded here that the providers with higher rates of reporting told the inquiry. That the N D I S Commission's policy of when in doubt, report. And sometimes inconsistent advice from N D I S Commission officers regarding whether an incident should be notified or not. Is in part a reason for their rates of notification.
Yep.
So uh so the numbers don't necessarily reflect. A clear understanding of what should be reported. That's what I take from that. Have any of you. Uh through your organisations, had they been in the situation of being unsure what needs to be reported? And taking the when in doubt, just report anyway?
When we are unclear about the guidelines, we go to the um commission's guidance materials. But when we're not sure, we pick up phone and we ask the question and they very quickly tell us if it's reportable or not. So it's it's actually quite easy. What we do find is that we possibly over-report. And that is be- because if there's any doubt, a slight, you know, unsh- whether we're unsure. And we then report anyway. And they they do get closed out very quickly. Um so we do have higher numbers than. We would normally.
Why would there be any uncertainty at Civic to know what was a matter that should be reported?
It's the nuances of the incident. So sometimes there's something that's a little bit grey, you're not sure, so you report it anyway. And then and then it comes back quickly as a closed and that the the matter's been dealt with. But it it makes us feel. More comfortable being transparent and and saying that, you know, this has occurred, rather than not reporting it and then. Um, yeah, underreporting.
Um, coming back to your unreasonable complainance uh policy. Uh if, for example, uh Civic applied that approach, and I take it that you've said that. There's only one and the policy is not generally used. But if someone in Civic formed the view. That the matter that might need to be reported to the N D I S was. Brought about by an unreasonable complainant, what would happen in those circumstances?
If the, if the complaint, if the incident meets the reportable guidelines, it will be reported.
Regardless of whether the person might be, in somebody's view, um an unreasonable complainant.
It's it's reportable. If it's reportable, it's reportable.
Okay. In terms of um Northcott, have you had any of the uh circumstances described by the N D I S Commission? Having uncertainty about whether to report or not?
I think in the early days of the application of the scheme, of the regulatory, the regulator essentially, um coming into operation. Um there was work that we had to do to understand the application in practical sense and. Um we have a very close relationship um operationally with our um N D I S team and would seek guidance. On those reportable incidents, um and then adapt our appropriate policy or practice in response to that.
And in Cara's response, so if you've still got that uh document, it's page six, paragraph fourteen. You've suggested the N D I S Commission could strengthen its guidance to have a greater focus on best practice examples. And innovative solutions that have produced quality outcomes for N D I S participants. And then you talk about best practice examples. Is the aim on having some better guidance on best practice examples? To help Cara understand what it should or shouldn't report?
Um. It is, I I guess, the the role of the N D I S Commission to enable providers. To provide a high quality service. So from their, you know, the the reports that they've reviewed, their experience, their knowledge and skill. And what can we learn from their processes more generally? So not just if something should be reported. But um to to assist us to be a a better provider.
All right. So coming back then to any guidance on the types of matters that. Constitute reportable incidents or when to raise any complaints or issues with the N D I S Commission. Do you think at this stage the commission needs to provide further or clearer advice to service providers?
Um, I am not hearing from our safeguarding team that that is the case. We have a fairly um comprehensive matrix to evaluate all incidents. We rate them from level two to five, um and um and from that determine what is reportable. We also, because the criteria is a negative impact, and impact can be difficult to determine. So we have a daily triaging team of social workers, you know, people with experience in services. Um and appropriate skills around the table to actually determine, you know, is this impact. And such a threshold that it should be reported. So I do believe that we have quite an informed. Process for determining whether something should be reported.
Uh for Northcott?
Could you just repeat the question for me?
Just a question whether you think that there needs to be any further guidance or uh assistance from the N D I S Commission. To help service providers understand what they should or shouldn't uh notify.
Yep. Um, look, I think there should be constant reinforcement and support for all of us to make sure that we are um understanding and um. The interpretation. And I can only speak on behalf of my organisation and we've spent a lot of time and effort to ensure we do and. A close relationship to ensure that we can talk to the commission directly. But not speaking on behalf of others, but considering the importance of reportable incidents. Um I think it's useful for the commission to continue to support and educate the sector around the issue.
Is something like the own motion report a a helpful uh tool? That if the commission's undertaking inquiries of this kind and publishing its results, is that something that. As an organisation, you would look to for improving and having a better understanding of. Of what should be reported and the approach to reportable incidents?
From my perspective, um I think uh any additional understanding of the issues and the nature. Of reportable incidences is and can be useful. Um and we certainly make sure that we are. Across those um inquiries and understand what they might mean for us and where the learnings are.
So coming back to Cara and that observation that you make about the commission could strengthen its guidance to have. A greater focus on best practice examples and innovative solutions. Uh you will have seen in the own motion report. That the commission has drawn on the literature review done by Professor Bigby. And then Professor Bigby's account of what would constitute a good or best practice framework. Have you had an opportunity to review that? And does that provide you with some examples or focus on best practice? That you'd identified in your response?
Yes. No, it is um, it is on my list to do that gap analysis and we have not completed that gap analysis.
All right. Now, with respect to a matter that makes its way either through to the police. Perhaps to a safe work um agency or the N D I S commission. Obviously, there will be a person with disability about whom those notifications are made. To what extent does the person with disability and or their family and or their advocate remain informed? About the process of external reporting? What are your policies in that? Uh Northcott?
Yeah, so we um we make sure that we um are very clear with the people. The person with a disability involved in that situation, that they understand our obligations to report. And we um also. Uh explain to them that uh some of those reporting requirements from a regulatory perspective don't require their consent to do so. We're obliged to do so under the regulation and the act in which we um deliver services. Um however, we uh ensure that that person is kept up to date of that process and what it means. And explain it to them um in a way that they would understand. In terms of informing um other people in their circle of support. Uh if that person i- is their own decision maker, that would be completely up to them to determine as to whether or not that information was shared. Um however, if they have a a legal um decision maker, we we would we would engage um that person.
Okay. And what's the situation for Civic?
It's exactly the same as that.
All right. If, for example, the uh N D I S Commission works through its own investigation. And finds that there has been, and I'll just use some layperson's language here, but a failing on on the part. Of the service provider with respect to the matters reported. The commission's got a range of powers that it can take. In terms of the service provider. Uh I have asked the commissioner at a previous hearing whether she considers those powers extend. To her making a recommendation or requiring a service provider to make redress. To the victim survivor of uh the conduct that gave rise to the report and the investigation. And I'll ask her about that tomorrow, see if she's reflected more on that. Just noting that for the Commonwealth. Uh but has have there been any discussions with. You as service providers about the outcome of any uh reportable incidents? That may require some remedial action to support the victim survivor? Have you had those discussions with the N D I S Commission? Cara?
No, I'm not aware of any discussions with the N D I S Commission.
Yeah, and that hasn't arisen as to an outcome from the commission. Requiring action to be taken to provide some remedial uh or some redress. Remedial actions or address for the victim?
Um, no, I I cannot point to an example. I'm not a aware. Um. There was a a matter dealing with the the commission um. Earlier on, um in relation to um some recommendations that they had made. It's a completely separate matter.
And you've set you've set that out and the the steps are in in your response. Okay, so nothing on that one. And Northcott, has that come up for you?
We certainly receive um direction from the commission in relation to um. Or have received direction from the commission in relation to s- to specific requests for particular actions on on our part. And an example might be um uh undertaking of mediation with a with a person involved in order to. To seek um a resolution to a situation as an example.
Okay, so that's uh at at the prompt of the commissioner or your suggestion to the commissioner?
It it could be either or both. It really does depend on the situation. Um but we certainly, the the commission on an individual. Complaints and incident level uh can and has talked to us about uh what they would like to seek. To see from us in response to uh a particular uh experience for for a person um who we're providing supports to.
And for Civic?
So we've only ever been asked for extra information to provide, um and not not for anything to be addressed.
Right. Now, just want to ask you a series of questions uh to understand from the perspective of. All they are three service providers, whether any of the following would assist service providers in meeting their external. Reporting obligations. Do you think service providers would be assisted with training on best practice in complaint handling?
Yes, yes.
Yes. And who do you think uh should provide that? Would that be a function you would expect from the N D I S Commission? Or from other agencies?
Previously, there's been similar types of support from the ombudsman when they had functions similarly responsible. Um it may not have been call training, it may have been um information sessions or education sessions. Uh so I think that that. Given the commission has taken over some of the functions um of the ombudsman in that space, uh that would be a a welcome assistance.
I think we heard yesterday that N D S, and I don't know if your organisations and members of N D S provide. Quite a lot of material uh for their members. Uh do any of you have access to that material or use that material?
Yes.
But you still think that there would be some benefit in the commission doing some work on. Training on best practice in complaint handling?
One of the reasons why I think it would be useful for the commission to have a role in that, um and it may not be that they have to conduct that themselves. But that they have um the opportunity to to gain insights around broader issues and trends for all of us. Um and I think that that information could be valuably put back into uh an education or or information approach for the industry.
And what about training on incident management and reporting? Would that equally assist service providers?
I I think you can um always use training on incident management, but I think it goes to the culture of the organisation. And how well um the calling out of the incidents is, you know, embraced in the organisation.
Right. We've uh asked you and many others over the course of the last few days about their policies. On a whole range of different issues, but today we're focused on policies in relation to complaint handling. If um we assume that support workers may have several jobs and work for different. Providers who may have different policies, particularly in relation to what constitutes a complaint. A feedback, a grievance, a serious complaint, whatever it might be. And that service providers have very different approaches to the way in which complaints will be addressed. Both in terms of the involvement of participants, timeframes, outcomes and the like. Do you think it would assist N D I S providers and support workers to have model policies and procedures? Set out in a template form on complaint handling and complaint processes? Or would you prefer us to be able to continue to do things your own way?
I can see a a standard approach across the sector would be helpful. Um we have invested. Considerably in our policies and they they, I think they work well for our organisation. Um but I can see that level of consistency. Um I'd just add in our case, yes, of course, we have um. Customer support workers that work for a variety of organisations and that may well be the case, they have different views. We have full-time, permanent um. Leaders um in each service. So the first, when an incident arises, it's always to be communicated to the leader too. So at least we get that consistency and understanding of how our policies.
And Northcott?
Um, look, all all of us providers have clearly developed our policies and procedures in response to our. Particularly regulatory obligations um in relation to the commission and the practice standards. Um so I think. Uh the ability to streamline or get a consistent nature of some of the structures we talk about, be that terminology, definitions. Um frameworks for assessing risk would be useful because I think that might provide frontline workers the ability to. Understand it across settings. One of the issues though to consider is that each organisation will have different systems in terms of. Um online incident management systems in our case. So we need to be able to still provide uh the opportunity for that. To to fit in with that framework. But um certainly uh being part of the um conversations in relation to the commission's work in that space. It's really evident um that there's a lot of confusing ways that we all talk about what is essentially the same thing.
Well, I'm also sort of thinking from the perspective of a work. Well, I'm also sort of thinking from the perspective of a worker, say for example that she has casual shifts and in the course maybe of a month works at a few different locations. And each of her employers has very different complaint handling systems and also different definitions about what might be the subject of a complaint or a grievance. So in one organisation, if something happens and it's zero tolerance, she might be stood down immediately. But in another organisation, she might be required to provide a written reason or attend an interview before she stood down. And in another organisation, she might um not have to do anything and just mainly continue to work. From the worker's perspective, having to work providing the same type of service, albeit in different locations, subject to discipline, different disciplinary rules and procedures, there's a an unfairness on support workers, would you agree, to navigate a range of different systems?
In in terms of an organisation's response to a a worker and and applying their disciplinary policy, I I think that is an organisational issue related to the industrial means by which they're employed and I I find, I think it would be difficult to try and separate that. I I think there's benefit around the um the, as I said, the terminology, the definition, the frameworks, but I don't think that you can um get a consistent response in those settings because I think that points to the culture of an organisation, it points to um the nature of their industrial um agreements as well.
In terms of uh what may assist service providers, do you think guidance about conducting fair and thorough internal investigations and when and how to engage external investigators and what you require of external investigators would be of assistance?
I I think again that that kind of resource would be of assistance. We've undertaken some work to determine a panel of of external investigators that that we deem suitably qualified and experienced and appropriate. But um not all organisations would necessarily have the capacity to do that.
Well, we've we've had an opportunity in the Royal Commission to see quite a large number of different types of investigations that have been undertaken. Uh some have been very lengthy, some have been conducted through legal advisers so that the investigation outcome reports will be privileged and confidential. Uh some have been done by people with no skills in investigation and others have been done by retired detectives. So there's quite a broad range of people involved in investigations. What we haven't seen is investigators who have particular skills and expertise in understanding how to conduct an investigation from a rights-based perspective with a deep understanding of a human rights approach meets trauma-informed meets culturally responsive. Are you aware in the uh your work in commissioning investigations as to whether or not there are investigators who are not just the lawyers, the police uh or people who might be experienced in doing investigations because that's what they've done a lot of in their workplaces?
We uh talked a little bit before just about the the panel of investigation, I guess agencies we use. We we don't attempt to use lawyers and police, that's certainly not been our intention in uh my understanding at all of the organisation's approach. We've sought appropriately skilled people who understand the vulnerabilities of the people uh who they're undertaking investigations, who do uh appreciate the impact of trauma. Um so I I think um assisting organisations to make appropriate decisions would be good and I'm happy to take that on notice back to my team to um to provide further information if we have some useful recommendations about particular um agents that that may well uh reflect those requirements.
I've not seen this myself in in the material, but uh I haven't seen any programme to support people with disability and particularly people with disability who use these these services to have the opportunity to develop the skills for themselves to be able to participate as investigators or conciliators or to assist organisations in any type of dispute resolution. Most of the policies and the way in which the practices apply uh seem to be about people with disability, but very little involvement of people with disability in the process. Do any of your organisations include people with disability in the process? And if not, would it assist to have some guidance about best practice in how that might be able to be achieved?
Can I just clarify, when you say include people with disability in the process, is that the development of the process of conducting in- uh investigation?
So you may have, for example, at the early stage which you talked about, people with disability as part of co-design in a policy, that's getting at the rules on paper. Then there's co-designing a process and then there's the execution of the process. So for example, how somebody might give their story and how they'll tell you about the events that occurred to them, to what extent are people with disability involved, either as a facilitator, as an intermediary or to be able to provide that advocacy support? So it's building in to each stage of the process, not just people with disability as the subject of it, but actually active participants in all stages to build up that skill of investigation, dispute resolution and also to have a voice in deciding the outcome. I I haven't seen that in the material that's been produced on anything under the vast notices that we have. So I was keen to ask you whether or not that's something that you've seen in practice at all and it might just not have been recorded anywhere.
I I've don't, I've not seen it in practice, but I think it's a really good idea and a and a way that um we could collectively as an industry think about, uh you know, I guess a mechanism to 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 undertake that. I'd be really excited to be involved in it.
But something like that sits very uh well with models of supportive decision-making. So the same processes in, the skill in supportive decision-making could equally apply to processes in terms of resolving disputes and being engaged not only in the outcome, but obviously how that dispute's resolved, but you're not aware of any?
I'm I'm not aware. Again, I'm happy to um take it on notice and see if any um any of my team are.
I'm not aware of it either. We use clinicians, not, but not external.
Well, when you, so when you loo- you use clinicians, are you not sort of framing things in a health model?
No, because.
And I'm trying to think about a model that brings it into a more social disability model than just clinicians or a legal model or a police-type model.
So I think we do go quickly to clinicians and we may need to think outside the square on that. I agree.
And Cara?
Yeah.
I know it's early days for you.
So all of our policies refer to advocacy in the general context, don't um encourage um and promote the idea of um um people with disability being advocates for others. Um it's a very welcome concept.
So this is really thinking of different ways of dispute resolution rather than the the traditional ways. I suppose that's what I'm asking you. Is there an openness, do you think, in the sector to think more broadly about different techniques of dispute resolution?
Yes, we would welcome that.
Um Commissioners, I've made it to one minute to four and so those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner McFue, do you have any questions?
Uh thank you, I do. Uh thank you a- again, all of you for your contribution. My question relates to, uh the question is for any or all of you. It relates to what both Cara and Northcott were talking about internally, your campaign to, like for example, Cara used to say something, speak up. Can you point us to any specific examples or evidence that they actually work? Are these campaigns effective? Do staff feel really empowered to really speak up? Um there's an, perhaps Cara in your point, from your point of view, you've only been with the organisation for a short time, but any observation? Have you seen?
Can, yes. So through our um safeguarding team, we monitor services um where reporting may be low or generally the number of reporting seems to have declined over a month. And that's when we do actively go back and promote um our See Something, Say Something campaign or something similar. We use um workplace, social media internally to actively promote. And um whilst I haven't seen the numbers, um that's in response to any decline, uh generally of course, but in addition in response to a decline in reporting numbers.
But just quickly before I hear from any, it sounds like you constantly then have to remind people to do that, so there's been no change really in behaviour?
Well, um I think the change in behaviour is evident in an uptick of the number of reported incidents into our system. But I think it is a constant programme of just encouraging, reminding, um you know, it's a it's a healthy thing to do.
Um I'd. I I would just add to that, that um the way that we survey our staff can also help provide information in relation to those campaigns. Um so when we're asking staff whether they feel equipped to do their job or whether they understand when they need to report, um and those types of questions can also be a good way to gauge the responsiveness of the campa- campaigns. Um and the reason that we, and we do keep um those campaigns going, they're not a one-off, they're an ongoing piece of work because we want to ensure that it's a a a consistent cultural change across the organisation and not just a one-off education piece.
Civic also has an ongoing um campaign of if in doubt, shout it out. And that we know works because we receive um several um uh personal emails to myself, to members of the leadership team, apart from our inquiry um lines or our feedback lines. So we know that people do actually follow the messaging and we do reinforce it as well um with safety weeks, safety months. Um we constantly ask um staff to know or we tell staff that they can rea- you know, use that slogan and and and, yeah.
So again, it sounds like you need things like safety week and again, uh something.
We remind them so that, yeah. Because we have obviously staff change or things happen, we send it out often to ensure that everybody is across it.
I have one more topic and it relates to Miss Eastman's question at the end about supporting disabled people in the process. I might have misunderstood uh some of the questioning, but in my mind, I was thinking about what we've heard and what I've heard, for example, in private sessions of people who are really very significantly um, you know, they have significant barriers, they're in group homes where they're just less isolated, they have no way of making a complaint. So that's the hypothetical I have in my mind. So I wasn't quite sure if you'd answered Miss Eastman's question. So I put it to you, how do you support those people in particular? You said you were open to idea, but you, uh that we know it's happening. Any response from any of you?
Yeah, I I had a different interpretation of Miss Eastman's question um being more about a way to involve people with disability, build the capability of people with disability to develop skills to undertake investigation uh processes, if you like. That's what I understood Miss Eastman's question.
Oh, I may have misunderstood. How, the count who can help me?
No, my, um. I'm sorry if my questions were not clear. It was not so much supporting people with disability to participate in the process, but in effect to empower people with disability to actually run the process, to be the investigators, to be the uh conciliators and to think of different forms of dispute resolution, ideally designed by and for people with disability rather than in a sense be just the subject matter. So active participants.
Yep. Alright, thank you. And I heard you responded earlier, so thank you for pointing that. Uh thank you, no more from me.
Commissioner, a bit. Um, can I ask, uh has the NDIS Commission visited any of your sites?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Um, if a worker is dismissed um for an action that they have or something that they have done that you believe is serious enough to warrant dismissal, what do you do with that information? We've heard that workers can often work in multiple places, including in aged care facilities or something. Do you report that worker that um could then trigger a broader investigation of their um right to work with vulnerable people? Or if it's reported through the NDIS, do they take that action? What happens to try and stop those workers moving or never being caught out or whatever that might be? What what is your involvement in that broader sector protection?
We're certainly obliged to report to the NDIS Commission uh as, and they make uh take that information and use it in their worker screening programme. I don't know what else they do across sector as a result of that, but we would certainly, and we are obliged under the, under the standards, uh to report that to the commission.
Is it same for all of you?
Yeah. Um, yes, and we've had this discussion internally um as we look to recruit as well. How do we make sure that we're, um you know, the screening is effective?
You all seem to know each other in a state or in an area. Do you share that information? That um, that someone, um.
If if uh another provider asks me about a particular.
A reference or, yeah.
Person, I say that I.
You're explicit that.
I would say we.
That they were dismissed for that reason?
Yes.
Yes, if there's information sought from us in relation to verifying employment details, but we have to be mindful that we um are not able to breach privacy around just talking to colleagues about um situations.
Well, I'm a bit too short in my term to be able to um contribute well to that that one. We certainly have had discussions around the appropriateness of doing that internally that I'm aware of, but I cannot point to examples where we have had that discussion with another provider.
And when you recruit someone, do you look carefully to get references and see what their past experience has been?
Yeah, our our recruitment um policy requires um at least two positive referees, one of which must have been the previous supervisor and we ensure that we undertake sufficient research in relation to that. So if someone puts a mobile number, for example, we make sure that we've gone through and we've contacted that business entity through its official number and sought the name of that person um to try and make sure that we address those concerns.
And you think these arrangements between the NDIS and the way you do it are strong enough to prevent um these people who could do harm to continue working?
I I don't, probably don't know enough about what the commission does in response to the information to answer whether it's adequate. What what I would say is that um anything that enables across the care industry uh the ability to understand where there are people who should not be employed to support vulnerable people, we would support such a an arrangement. Thank you.
Miss Fury, Miss Forsyth, Miss Doyle, thank you very much for your repeated contributions to the Royal Commission. Appreciate your assistance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair. That concludes for today and we resume at ten tomorrow.
Uh can we reserve the actual starting time so we can perhaps have a talk about that tomorrow uh uh later on and let people know?
Sorry, what's the time to start tomorrow?
Yes, we can let people know. We'll have a discussion.
At ten AM? Sorry, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Perhaps we could start at nine thirty is what I'm going to suggest.
Well, if you, if the commissioners wish to start at nine thirty, I'm sure we can start at nine thirty, but probably those following the proceedings and in the room would need to know that now.
Yes, well, is uh is that an inconvenience, twenty-one? I think that would be a sensible thing to do, so let's start at nine thirty.
We were scheduled tomorrow on on our best endeavours to be finished by three tomorrow afternoon, so finish by two thirty.
But anyway, let's start at nine thirty. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.